With you guys.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forward which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to finish what I said, it'll be a joint meeting tonight with the Finance Committee. So we'll go over a lot of the things that we have here in the budget after Tracy is going to make a brief presentation, or a good presentation, but, yes.
One from Eric too.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
Board and Committee reports, and that will be Eric Svan, Chairman of the Municipal Building Committee, he has an update for us, and that's in the form of a presentation, right Eric?
Uh, no. I haven't.
We're all waiting for this.
A lot of this is the presentation.
If that's the high point of our night, right?
Hopefully it will be. This will be the high point of our year, I guarantee that.
Okay.
All right, Eric Svan, Chairman of the Municipal Building Committee. Let's start with, a little over a year ago, or a year and two weeks ago, the Public Safety Complex Committee was dissolved and the Board of Selectmen created the Municipal Building Committee. We then set on our way with a new charge and a focus to still solve critical facility needs of the town, and do so focusing on Town Hall and the Police Department. So we set about doing that, and we've had 25 meetings since then. That doesn't count joint meetings, it doesn't count a public workshop that we held, it doesn't count my attendance at FinCom Planning Board meetings, or other select meetings where I just gave a report, it also includes two reports, annual town meetings. And I went back over my notes, and one of the first reports I made to the Board of Selectmen, I was over at the library, and I found a line that said, you know, "I'm not in this to produce another report and throw it on the pile." And so that, some of that is right, and some of that is wrong. The good news is, is they don't have a report, the Municipal Building Committee has a recommendation for a project to actually solve some of the facility needs of the town. The other part of the statement I was wrong in is it wasn't "I" that was going to do this, it's "we" did this. We, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and the Planning Board, did this jointly. The, and thanks to the Board of Selectmen for setting up these joint meetings, so that we could come to a consensus on a recommendation. Now, that said, I'm sure half the crowd is going to say, "I think you took a left turn somewhere, or you backtracked, or you're kind of got off the police station, Town Hall a little bit," but I see it as a step forward in the recommendation that's about to be made, because it's originally what the Selectmen had charged the Public Safety Complex Committee to achieve. It took some time, and it took some, I don't know, what an issue or cost of action for certain things to come together, but it was true before the holidays, I was standing here talking about a police station and a Town Hall on this property, and the reason for doing that is that there were some negotiation or understanding issues. The issues at the Fire Department that were addressed in order to create the Public Safety Complex Committee are still there, and they're even worse today. The issues dealing with the police station are still there, and they get, seem to get worse, or we can count the dollars that the town is wasting on patch and repair and fixes. It was just a couple of weeks ago that the water heater in the Town Hall had to be replaced on the fly. So with that, I'm very pleased that the Municipal Building Committee can present a recommendation.
Good known lives. I am very pleased that the Municipal Building Committee can present the recommendation. I think most people are, has a report, it's, or the recommendation, didn't over finesse it, and it wasn't ready for the big screen just yet, but in this recommendation, we have a simple letter that recommends the project. Again, it's about making people understand that these deficiencies exist, and that they will continue to exist, and with that, then I've included a site survey, which is just the existing property here at Town Hall and the adjacent parcels of Fire Protection Company Number Two, a proposed site plan, proposed floor plans of the Town Hall renovation, and of the, what I'm calling again, the Public Safety Complex floor plans, and then a budget. So simply put, the Municipal Building Committee has unanimously voted to recommend a project to construct a 20,000 square foot combined police and fire station adjacent to the Town Hall on land currently owned by Fire Protection Company Number Two, along with some lesser renovations to Town Hall. The feedback from some residents, and I've had a little bit more than a handful of residents send emails along, or have discussions here at Town Hall, and it keeps coming back, "The Town Hall looks so beautiful, why would you have to do anything to it?" And explaining that, yes, it does look good, that there was a fair amount of money and effort spent in order to update Town Hall for what you see, but a lot of that effort was donated, and doesn't, and did not go as far as to get some of the items like the police station, and a totally new roof, things that you really can't see from the outside and just passing by. So, this recommendation, I think the first objection, and the biggest objection probably out there is that, wow, it costs, it costs more, but we're basically, we're adding about 6,000 square feet for a price of about $4,000 to the equation of what we had before. And yes, it does cost more, the Municipal Building Committee is very sensitive to price, we set out looking at the program, we set out looking at sites, and each time, the common denominator and judgment was, "What's this project going to cost, and how can we solve the most and have it cost the least?" And in doing this, and looking at the numbers, and putting the budget together, there are economies of scale in terms of savings of doing more in one project than sprinkling the same work over three projects over time, hiring three different contractors. Cost of escalation, last year, the first time Tracy ran some bond financing numbers for me, we were down between 2% and 3%, now we're up at 4.5%. So, the window is closing, and everybody knows that interest rates are about to rise sometime this year or next year, and so that's just going to add cost to the project. Also, construction escalates each year, whether it's 2%, whether it's 4%, there seems to be a big rush now, at least in my work in the day, that a lot of clients are coming forward with projects that they had put off, and put off, and put off, and now all of a sudden with rising interest rates, they're understanding that putting it off any longer, projects that are in the millions of dollars, you know, will cost them additional money. I ran a quick calculation, and for the difference of, well, I ran the construction escalation, and by the time you delay a project one year, and you add 2%, and this is on the previous $7 million figure, the cost of escalation is about $200,000, and you wait another year, and it goes up to about $400,000 to $500,000. So the longer we push off these bigger projects, the more they're going to cost. So with this, in the recommendation, there are two letters, one from Building Services for the Town Hall, one from the Police Chief on the deficiencies of the stations. There's a simple colored site plan showing the Town Hall with the trailers removed, the intent is, is that, once the police station is done, and the police vacate the basement, then Inspection Services, Health Department, and the Planning Department would move downstairs and have offices along the front, where there are windows, there'd be a central conference room for work that currently doesn't exist, and the planning office, small planning office behind me, would become part of the assessor's office. So there's really minimal work, and what was estimated to be about 5,000, new construction is now cut down to 2,400 square feet of renovation work. With that, the police station for the previous Public Safety Complex Committee was about 9,500 square feet, and if you take away some shared space, that pushed that up to about 9,900. Since we went, since the effort was made to sit down with the Police Department, go through the program, we can remove that extra thousand square feet of space, and bring the Police Department program back to 9,000 square feet. The Fire Department is, as previously reported, at about 9,000. Just give me a second to get an accurate number here. Fire department comes out to 11,000 gross square feet. In that, so in the end, there's a budget, the budget is broken out, I still have the Police Department, Fire Department, cost as a line item, renovations to Town Hall is a line item, there is a purchase, property purchase cost for the land next door, which gets added to the equation, and then this budget expands on non-construction costs that are required just to facilitate the project. So that's the front cover that has multiple pages, it tries, gives you the overview, and the total project cost that is being presented is $11,625,837. Of that, there's $984,348 for first phase design and engineering fees. That would leave amount to be financed at $10,641,489. On the next page, it still breaks out the three projects, so that you can size up each one individually, and costs for shared area, there is a great synergy in taking departments in town and combining those together, elevator, lobby, mechanical room, everything that you need to have one building functioning, doesn't need to be split in two, and can be one, so those are equally split between the two, between the police and the Fire Department. Land cost, site work was split between the two, extension of the sewer and water was split between the two projects. On the next page, this is the non-construction cost totals, so you have things like FF and E, furniture finishes and equipment for the Police Department, for the Fire Department, tried to separate out what a key item like the dispatch and radio might cost, and then Town Hall, FF and E, fees for architects and engineers, and then all the various consultants that are needed to actually facilitate a project. On the last page, I have the design and engineering costs. Design and engineering costs are based on a percentage of construction, so at the top line, there are the costs for the three separate projects added up to a total construction cost, percentage, 11.6%. On that number gives you a total design fee for, of $1,045,675. That's then broken out by the phase of, the different phases of work, schematic design, construction documents, bid, and construction administration, and then in the last section, totals up the amount needed for the design and engineering phases, where for the architect and engineer, only the fees for the schematic, the construction, and the bid phase are needed. The construction administration would not be requested at this time, and would not even be spent at this time until it was construction started. Also, some of the costs you can see have a percentage, 75, 150%, that's because only portions of the fees of the non-construction costs on the previous page are allotted here for that design phase. And then in the end, the last page, takes the amount to be financed, takes a 20-year term, 4.5% interest, and calculates the monthly payment and yearly payment for the town for the construction cost of the $10,641,489. The middle just sets the property value and tax rate for the average home assessed value, and then at the bottom in red, what's, what does this really mean? Financing $10,641,489 means that the average assessed home that has a property value of about $414,000 would have a yearly increase of $346, would have a monthly increase of So there's lots of metrics to size up the project. The costs for construction do contain an escalation percentage, which can be adjusted in the budget. The police station, fire station has a 2% escalation, because the costs, the costs I'm basing my estimates on started with the architect CSS that gave us the report, I've then gone through their numbers and made some adjustments on some changes, I've escalated their number because their cost was for starting the project today, this, you know, right now. And so we need to get out to next year, and there will be some increased costs to make sure we're covered, and I doubled the escalation cost on the Town Hall, it's $40,000, but the thought would be that the police would stay put until the new facility is done, and then they would move, and we wouldn't have to have temporary facilities for the Police I was able to see, the Police Chief did obtain a cost, similar metrics for the Salisbury Police Station that they're planning right now. I was able to go through that and check these numbers, and I have a, you know, good faith that the project task, the totals are in line, whether I have each of the individual lines exact, you know, need a little help, need a little input from other boards and committees to look at those, but I believe that for the size of the project, the intent of the project, the total construction cost is there.
Eric, it's a tremendously succinct document, and as always, you know, done at the highest capabilities, and I'm very impressed, and for those on television that couldn't have heard the beginning, because maybe the microphone was off, this is a joint venture, for those on television that are watching, I mean, the Finance Committee CPC, Selectmen, and the Building Committee have really been involved in this, and I think this is the crowning document, this is well done. Can you receive some questions from folks there for a bit?
Yes.
So, does anyone have any questions, either my board, or in the audience for Eric, before he goes?
My first question is probably a bigger question, but what does this do to the relationship between the town and the Fire Department moving forward? How do things change? What's the same, what's, and I'll, I just, I want to understand how the, I understand the building failure over there is leading to the sale, and this is, this is as a private entity, they cannot connect to Newbury.
So, can, I'll start, and Tracy can fill in. We have, I think you need to look at, look at the Fire Department as a Newbury Fire Department.
Okay. Do they look at themselves as a Newbury Fire Department now?
They do now.
Okay.
Yep.
From personal experience.
Okay, just, I want to get a sense of, like, what's going on, like, are they still there?
So, we have a Newbury Fire Department, they, we lease out their buildings and their facilities, at a cost of about $80,000 a year, is that about right? So, that cost, in terms of providing a new facility that the town would own, would not be an expense. There would be maintenance costs to maintain that facility, but they would be at a proportion, I won't quite say a fraction, but let's just say they're half or less of what that cost is right there. So there is some savings and synergies in terms of leasing out a facility and owning the facility. Secondly, I think the, there is an evolution to the needs of the town in terms of the service that is being provided. No one's, I think, has any questions whatsoever with the service and how it is provided, but the means, the technicality, and the costs are something that keep evolving, and this is a step in that direction, to provide solutions without going to drastic means and radically changing what we have. We're progressing. Does that make some sense?
Because, I'm just, I know people ask me, "We have a volunteer Fire Department, why are we putting anything in our budget for that?" That's...
We have a call Fire Department.
Call Fire Department.
Okay.
And we also have four full-timers currently, and are proposing adding an additional full-timer.
And Erica, Tracy can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are operational costs that are involved anyway with these, both departments, and I mean, supposedly the Fire Departments think of themselves as a Newbury Fire Department anyway, and, I mean, I think the people right now in Protection Two, if this goes forward, envision that they'll still be, you know, some autonomy with running the things they know best, because certainly, we don't know best how to run them. And, you know, I think that's kind of the mechanisms that occur in most municipal Fire Departments, so. Tracy, you have anything to add to that? So, Frank?
Would they still operate as a call Fire Department, or would they be employees of Newbury?
They, actually, all of the full-timers and all of the call firefighters are and have been employees of the Town of Newbury. I think there's, there isn't really, or there hasn't been a clear understanding of the defined roles, but we have always been the Newbury Fire Department, but the Town of Newbury has leased, for lack of a better term, the facilities in Byfield and the facilities in Newbury, as well as the apparatus.
Larry?
Let me get to the microphone, so if you... My name is Larry Day, I live at 207 High Road, and I am a former member of Protection Fire Company Number Two, have been in the town since the late 70s, and have worked on Fire Departments as people in Byfield have. There is no question that we have a unique relationship with the Fire Departments, and I believe functionally that we should retain the relationship that we have as supporting two independent, yet coordinated Fire Departments for the town. We have benefited substantially financially through the work that they have done, the grants that they have received, they buy, have traditionally bought their own equipment, they are in the process of buying our first fire truck for the town, prior to that, that was raised by the Departments, and I want to keep that going, I think it's imperative. I believe that some operational items will change, but I believe that the concept of them calling us "we're one Newbury Fire Department" doesn't cut it with me, because I go back when there were two separate Departments, and they didn't necessarily get along to do well. When the alarm blew, no problems, when it didn't blow, you had issues, and we continue to do that. I believe functionally the town, because of this initiative that moves forward, should commission a study as to what the right attitude should be, and make no assumptions, that we know what's going to be best for them. Now, I understand times are changing, and I think we need to incorporate and protect both Protection Company Number One over in Byfield, who's done a tremendous job serving the citizens there, and not try to put them in all two in a compromising situation because of our impending needs for a new police station, which is really what's driving this whole discussion. It's that we need to keep the relationship the way, for as long as it can possibly be. The benefits to the town are substantial, we do have employees, correct, but we don't have a cost structure for Fire Departments similar to other towns have, and these people are out working day in and day out, raising funds, spending their money and their time to keep the cost to the citizens of Newbury low, both Byfield and Old Town, and I think it's the best deal. Now, to say because they have a new building, we're going to change it, and they think themselves "one Newbury Fire Department," that may be the way it looks on paper, but it's not the way it's going to work in real life, as far as I'm concerned. So I am concerned that we do not take what we have used as a, I think, a significant benefit to the town and compromise it, because we have to build a new building. Thank you.
Anyone? Go ahead Frank.
On the heels of that, I was thinking exactly the same.
Frank Remley, 16 Old Farm Way, I'm Chairman of the Finance Committee. I was thinking the same thing that Larry was a minute ago, if we change this relationship right now, as I see it, Fire Number Two and Fire Number One have a compelling need, really, to raise money as the best way they can, whether it be outsourcing services, or whatever, or running Christmas tree burns, or whatever. Will those efforts still continue, or will our costs go up as a result of the loss of that capability, or that compelling need for raising funds on the outside?
You certainly have to address that with the Fire Company, but I haven't heard any discussions about them discontinuing their fundraising efforts.
I just, I think you should have, I think what this calls for is a select committee of citizens of the town to look into the future of the relationship and do a good analysis of it, and make no presumptions that we know what the answers are going to be. And you should come at it with a predicate, saying, "Is it in the town's best interest to have two independent fire companies supporting our town?" And basically, look at it in detail, and look at all the ups and downs, because I think that some people will say, "Well, we're building the building, we've got a Newbury Fire Department, that's the way it's going to go, and we're hiring people." Correct, but I think because of our situation, we should look at it closely.
I think some of the...
Oh, sorry.
Some of the distinction comes, the independent fire companies are going to continue to exist, but the municipal aspect of the Newbury Fire Department is that we have leased this equipment, we have hired people who are full-time, and so that means that independent of the two fire companies, Newbury, the town of, does have a Fire Department, and they participate in it. So, while it is a legal distinction, it's a very important one as far as coverage and insurance, and that's part of what has driven this more than the building, as I understand the history that has gone on. So it's not that the town is suddenly trying to take the Fire Departments from the independent companies, it's more that the town is trying to protect the independent companies and the town's legal responsibilities in moving forward. So, I agree that finding out what that relationship is going to be is important, but I don't think that the companies currently feel that we're trying to take their independence from them, which is what it sounds like your concern is.
I didn't say that, my sentiment is that because of the question that was asked, will we have two independent fire companies, because that's the question of the day, it should be reaffirmed that we will have, that it is in the best interest of the town, and also that the ongoing relationship be essentially studied by a committee, and based in going, the concept of us leasing the stations and all that, that's relatively current thinking, and, you know, was never a discussion of leasing equipment, it was a stipend, basically, years ago, given to the Departments to offset some of their operating costs, and it was kind of a contractual thing, it wasn't a lease deal. Leasing has changed, and I understand that maybe that's a requirement by state law, but I just think you have to study it, and I don't want to basically, and I want to bring, I'd like you to bring some of the people from the community on both sides of town to participate and give you their opinions of how it can work and work well, and continue to work well, I should say.
I mean, I have to say, in listening to Larry, kind of threw me off a hair, because I hadn't thought of the fact that, I mean, I know there's Byfield, and I know there's Newbury, but I guess I'm, you know, naive enough to think that they still figured that they were the Newbury Fire Department. The legislation that passed is the things that pushed forward the idea of leasing, and that was the legislation that was to protect the Fire Departments, maybe ultimately, from regionalization. I think the fact that this Fire Department, if they felt they were going to be absorbed and run over by the town, would probably have never offered to move forward with a co-joined building project that might benefit the town.
Agreed, I'm just saying...
I think, I think it's really a little bit presumptuous on your part to kind of push that out, and maybe get it beyond what you intended it to get, and for it to get legs.
I'm saying, I'm saying that discussion here, centered around this building, and it's a significant commitment to town resources, and it's changing the... and is changing the relationship of the departments.
Granted, but Larry, if we're not careful, what these guys offered to do, granted because they have some constrictions going forward with their buildings, but what they offered to do was for the better of the town and in the best interest of their side of the fire department. And I don't think they had any thoughts that they were all of a sudden going to become a municipal fire department and be totally under the thumb of the town. Well, they wouldn't have done it. And they did it to try to help the town. So that being said, is there anyone else? Chuck, you have anything?
Yeah, the organization, Protection Company Number Two, is still going to be there. It's going to be the Old Town Fire Department. They're going to meet monthly. They're going to go over their bills.
Run their handbills.
The organization is still going to be there. But it's going to be inside a brand new building. That's as simple as I can put it.
Eric?
Well, one of the factors delaying the recommendation that was, you know, reported, and I certainly handed out budgets in the past two months, and this has progressed. And as I said, it's not a left turn. It's not backtracking. It's a cycle that has come forward. But the facility needs of the police department and it seems of the fire department are getting to a critical point where if action isn't taken, action's going to be taken upon us and the town in a way that we may not all like and want. We may have, I don't know, trailers on the green or we may have our police department put somewhere else. And there may be another cause of action. And that could happen to the fire department too with their facilities. It's the drive to get something done for the Municipal Building Committee is not to let a DPW story happen all over again, where all of a sudden we wake up and everybody's outside in the cold because we couldn't figure out how to make a decision, make the best decision and move forward. And waiting for axles to fall off trucks in the middle of the road isn't a way to figure out how to, it's time to repair them. We need to look forward and that time is ticking away. Police Department and their issues and their union and their people have been, have put up with a fair amount for a fairly long time. And again, the issues of people working in the conditions that are right below us, you know, it's their working conditions that we're trying to solve. And the fire company has issues with their building as well. So, you know, I do stand up here and I guess I'm a little nervous. My legs are shaking because I know the number is a lot more than I had previously done. And I fought hard for a year to get that number from nine down to seven. And now I'm back to 11. But it solves the most facility needs of the town in the timeliest manner. And the other part about if, in doing some studies about what the tax rate would be, what financing costs would be, certainly show that pushing these projects off at the dollars that are going to require to fix the solution will be money that we're, you know, we'll be spending onwards of half a million to millions of dollars if we kick this down the road.
Yes, Eric. Thanks, Eric.
Hello. Let's see. How's, can you hear me? My name's Elena Sales. I live at 125 High Road. I'm also the president of Newbury Elementary School, PTA. I'm here representing the parents. And I just want to say that I feel there's got to be another solution. I personally don't want to spend $10 million or 11 or 9 or even 7 on a new building. One solution I thought of was maybe, why can't we use the Newbury Port State Police? I don't know. Can you rent space? We have a very small town. Don't have a lot of crime. You know, couldn't we spend our money elsewhere? This Triton budget is getting slashed in half, more than half. We're a regional school. We're not even receiving the funds that we were promised to be a regional school. So then I think deregionalization, is anyone, is that on the table? Is that up for discussion? As, you know, as a parent and a resident, I plan to live here. I love our town. I love our community for the next 30, 30-something years. I want my kids to go to Triton. And I just feel like we're not spending our money in the appropriate places. And I know that the building, though, is suffering and that it's not healthy for the folks who work there. And I appreciate the police. But I just feel like we've got to come up with something better than a $10 million new facility. Can we, is there any other thing we could talk about combining facilities somewhere else? Thank you.
There were numerous, as Eric pointed out, Municipal Building Committee meetings held here, held other places. I did not see your face there. Why now?
Well, paying up the speed late.
You know, you know what, honestly? I kind of look at it this way, and I think it's probably the most effective and healthy way to look at it. Eric's done a lot of work. The Municipal Building Committee has done a lot of work. And Bob's sneaking up, so I got to get it out. But here's how I look at it. Who do you think is in the driver's seat in making these decisions?
The old town.
All we can do is hopefully, in a pragmatic fashion, with all these other great ideas you've heard tonight and all these great fears, try to vision out what we feel might be the best solution with some of the smartest folks that hopefully we have towards working towards that project. We're trying to vision out for something that might last 50 years and be the best bang for the taxpayers' dollars, especially under the conditions of financing at this time. If the people decide they don't want it, they don't need to vote for it. So it's still in the hands of the people. We're only taking this as a task to try to do what, at least at this time, we feel is the most pragmatic and succinct and probably the most, best way we can to meet our critical needs. And like I said, the fire department came forward not out of tremendous intentions for themselves, but saw an opportunity to help the town and to remedy some of the circumstances they had. So once again, I'll leave that with the fact, unless someone else has another way to phrase it. So, no, wait, let Erica, and then you can come up to the microphone, okay?
Hi. I'm Erica Jacobson, 15 Scotland Road, member of the Town Finance Committee. I think that there's two issues at play here. I have been lucky to be a part of this Municipal Building Committee process as part of the joint meetings between the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Municipal Building Committee. And I think that those discussions, we got to some really great consensus about trying to get to shared use facility, understanding the synergies that this town has done in order to keep our operating budgets in check, is that our police department isn't just a police department. They oversee so many of the other departments that are, we consider town services. Animal control, all of those things that you don't always see. That is where we've already seen some amazing synergies of getting those operations. So to put the police department somewhere else was something that the people that were involved in those decisions, we all talked it through. It doesn't make sense to have the police five miles away in one direction. It doesn't make sense to have Town Hall here. It makes sense to have those things together. Also, the building costs, as we've talked about, Eric talked. When you're talking about building or renovating two buildings, you're talking two elevators, two handicap accessible buildings. That's where you see that cost, boom, 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 boom. That it's not cheaper to do one thing. It's cheaper to do a combined. And ultimately, what we're talking about here is a major capital improvement. The decision made by this isn't impacting Triton's budget. And Triton's budget was not impacted by our Board of Selectmen. It was not cut here. It was the pressure faced by the other two towns put on the board, on the school committee to lower that budget. So no one here is against, and we're not doing it at the, believe me, if I thought that was the case, I wouldn't be here. The reason I'm on the Finance Committee is I am here to be part of the solution to make the town go forward in the right direction, not to be part of the problem and keep these arguments going. So I think that we look at two very different things. This is a very big capital that makes a stake of where we are. And I think it's a great, I think that Eric's committee, I think everyone who's been a part of it has really been thoughtful. And if there was a stone to be unturned, I don't know where we'd find it right now. So that's my opinion. I think that this is a great project to be moving forward and puts us in the right step.
Well said. Thank you, Erica. Yes?
I know Erica, and we've talked about this many times. And I'm sure that there's been no stone unturned. And I know that Erica is more well-versed in this than myself. Just, I'm very concerned about the school. So one suggestion I have then, because I know a lot of parents don't turn out. Like you said, myself hasn't come to many meetings. However, I think that we need to have a different route of communication between the town and the school. And I'm wondering, and I know it was like the paper, we have, the police have a Facebook page. Maybe we could work together in some capacity to put things out. We have a school newsletter every week that a lot of people read. We have a Facebook page. We have a PTA page. And maybe, and I know a lot of people are reading that because I look at it daily. And I've grown those pages from two to three people to over 400 in the last two years that I've been president. So at least we can start there, because I don't think people have all the information. And if I could do nothing else, I could do, I could help in that capacity.
And the one thing to remember is that the communications that go out from Triton cannot be political in any way. They can be informative. So we cannot make arguments for or against any issue on there. All we can do, and we did publicize the Municipal Building Committee.
I know. And I read it.
And I'm the one that's the one that I've been feeding everything to get it to Triton.
I gotta be, I gotta be honest. I mean, those are all open, I mean, one thing I hope my legacy will be as Chair of the Board of Selectmen is communication, I think, is key. Erica had thought a long time ago about what? Trying to condense the calendars so all our meetings weren't all, I mean, you, she's, you can go ahead. She's already been thinking of this. And the two of you folks could probably really put a lot of this synergy together and start to come out with some good aspects.
One of the big things I think needs to help to get parents more involved and be able to come to meetings is if we take the school calendar, and I've already talked to Brian Forged about this, and making events such as Election Day and town meetings for our school, for Newbury, Rowley and Salisbury, have those be nights that we do not have any baseball. There is no soccer. There is no homework. You clear the calendars. We get, we get Kids Club to open up. And we make it easy for parents with children to attend the meeting. We can't change the bylaw to change it to a Saturday, which also has a zillion other people argue against that. That needs to be done at a town meeting to change it. So if we work together and all of everybody, when I post something on Facebook, you post it on Facebook. When you say, I'm going to the meeting, you're going to the meeting. I, that's, I'm trying to get it, and I feel like I'm screaming into the wind. I feel like that people do not even want me on the email distribution list because I will get you when it's, when it's budget time. So, but anything I can write to help get the word out, I will do. It's what I do for a living. I tell stories about business. And that's, if I can convince people to buy more toilet paper, I can convince them about this.
Well, I've had, I've hosted over 12 PTA meetings and no one shows up for them either, so.
Eric, go ahead. One last thing.
So, and one last thing in...
Thank you, by the way.
In thinking about this and understanding, again, that that is, you know, it really is a large number. But looking at the state's website and looking at tax rate of our neighbors, Amesbury has a tax rate of 20.97, West Newbury 15.8, Groveland 15.06, Rowley 14.07, Salisbury 11.79. There are 353 communities in Massachusetts, of which 301 have a higher tax rate than Newbury. If you take the towns like Egretown and Nantucket, Tisberry, those that have super high valuations, so they have a four to $3 per thousand tax rate out, Newbury drops, you know, within the bottom 50 of the, of the communities. So that, and, you know, I like the low tax rate. I live here. I don't want my taxes to go up either. And the thought, the thought with the financing, so that, and I guess to that end, for our low tax rate, we have the Finance Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, the Town Administrator, the Board and all the other departments to thank for that low tax rate. The other thing that's happening now with Newbury is that we have, over the next six years, the current debt that's on the books will be retired. So as this project comes online and adds to the debt load, as soon as it increases the debt load, each year the debt load gets reduced. If, it's not like we just keep piling on year after year after year. There is a window of opportunity with the reduced debt to add the debt for long term and solve the problem sooner than later. And again, the numbers, I'm an architect, not a financial guy. But the longer we wait and the longer we push this out, the more it's going to cost to everybody.
And one last thing, at least, that I would like to say. I certainly understand everyone that spoke tonight. I understand the schools. I was a teacher. I have a master's in education. I mean, I understand. I understand what good education is. I moved from, I moved to Newbury to go to the Round Schools. I have seen our highway bonds close. You know, I have seen the police on the streets because of things that have occurred, you know, with the sewer. So, you know, we have public safety. We have education. We have, you know, libraries. And I can't forget the Council on Asian. And we have all the needs and everything we have within the town. And it's going to be a balance that at least I set myself forward to always try to maintain. I can remember standing on the stage over at the Round School saying, I will support them, try to support everything equally. And I think there'll be some years when it's not quite as equal and years when it might even itself out. But what'll happen is, for a small town like us, if the cost of one of the important services of this town begin to move way out ahead of all the rest because of the structure of how we gain our revenues, it'll be really hard. I mean, we'll perish. So it's not like we have a huge commercial retail base. So Chuck, my board, anything, guys? Marshall? Can you go up? Please?
Good evening. Marshall Jespersen, 169 Elm Street in Byfield. A lot of concern is, has been voiced about the amount of money that is going to be spent. And when I first came on to the Finance Department, I looked, the Finance Committee, I looked at what had happened over the years with our tax revenue in real terms. And even though you can look at the numbers and say, the numbers have gone up over the years, what in fact has happened in 1980 numbers, when we look at when we first started with Prop 2 and 1/2 and come down to where we are now, we are about $1 million a year shy of where we were then. Now, that's something that people don't like to hear. But, you know, because they, I've talked to a lot of people. They say, well, my taxes are going up. Yes, they are. But compared to your car payment, your mortgage and the amount you spend on milk and bread, they've actually gone down. So...
Sorry, based on, can you repeat that?
Yes, I can. Not only that, I can show you the numbers. But based on constant dollars, okay? How much it costs to buy, yeah, exactly. We have not kept up with inflation to the tune of about $1 million a year.
You mean, our town?
Our town.
Yep.
And so the town is actually contracted. You'd probably best to get up here if you wanted to do the questions. It's, it's really contracted in its revenues. What we have seen is more responsible financial management and ringing out a lot of waste to the point where it's muscle and bone and the muscle is really thin. And so to do what people would like to have done in the town is going to require more. And to get us to that point requires people saying and agreeing on what kind of town we want to have. And these are, these are real things that have happened over time. It's like, you don't notice it? Like, I didn't notice my hair was, one day, it's all gone? Took a long time and five kids, but it did. Thank you. I could see we go to the same bar. So that being, that being said, you know, we have a, basically, a situation of real need and a lack of funds to do it unless we get the political will and the will of the people to raise those funds. And that requires the kind of communication that Erica was talking about, the kind of drive that you were talking about on the PTA, and all of us coming to say, what kind of town do we want here? And are we willing to fund it? Thank you.
Come on up. And then we got to move along unless it's really pressing.
No, it's not pressing.
No, you, I don't, you, you go ahead. The one after, the one after you is getting taxed.
David Sales. I live at 125 High Road.
Yes.
An honor to be here. I, I am, like my wife, I haven't spent enough time attending, listening. I've been busy doing other things, but I'm... I've been busy doing other things, but I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight and hopefully more involved moving forward. So, I, I'm not here to speak upon the relative merits of the process that you went through to come to the, your decision because I don't know enough about it, but hopefully I'll have a chance to, to find out. But, as you speak to sort of getting hearts and minds of the community behind it, you know, one of the people that you're selling to is me. And one of the things that I've seen, when you say that cost has gone down relative, I see, I see my tax rate having gone up for the home that I live in more than a cost of living adjustment. Now, that's not to be, on the surface, I don't want to say that we're, I don't want that to seem as if we're doing a poor job of managing our finances. I, I do read the paper and I know the efforts that have been made. And I know that some costs that you folks deal with are inelastic. But that's, but I'm one of the people that you're selling to, and, and what you said doesn't, doesn't seem right to me in terms of, not that folks aren't doing a good job, but the net effect of what I've been facing as a, a citizen of the town. So, I, I look forward to listening more closely moving forward and, and being a part of it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick comment, and then we're gonna go forward. And, and, and correct me, guys, if it's not a good comment out there, but Newbury was one of those towns, when Proposition Two and a Half came along, we were frozen in time. And when we were frozen in time, we didn't have some of the abilities, not saying that some of those retail, commercial, and other things that came to other towns didn't bear costs and didn't bear burdens. But it's been somewhat of a struggle for us when the cost of salt, the cost of trucks, the cost of gas, the cost of everything that's involved, and the cost of schools and, and educating kids, and everything per se that we have, just like the milk that you want to refer to, is going this way. And we're somewhat staying here. And we don't have the other side of the funnel, you know, we don't have stuff dripping down from commercial and retail tax revenues. So, we'll do the best we can, and we can't prophesize the future. I mean, you're gonna hear a good re, presentation from Tracy, and then you're gonna see, if you stay, you're gonna see the Finance Committee and Selectmen battle out a budget. If it gets any better than that, I don't know where it is. So-
Madam, one?
Yes, go, Dame.
Just, so you're aware, on the budget issue, fifty-five percent of our current budget goes to education, and seven percent goes to debt, paying down our long-term debt. So, if we make this investment, it's not going to change those numbers. We're still going to be putting more than half of our tax revenues towards our schools because that's what we've decided is important. We're doing as much as we can. We don't have a lot to work with.
Good point, and some of that debt might be retiring too. Yep. All right.
One quick question.
Go ahead.
Eric, Eric, Salisbury PD.
No sleeping, Eric.
Salisbury PD, what is that costing, and what are they asking for? I know you have it right there.
That's just a police station.
Yes.
It's a eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty square foot police station. Our square, our police station is nine thousand square feet. Their total project cost is eleven million, six hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine.
So, my point here, folks, eleven million dollars for a police station alone. This committee has given us three buildings for that same amount of money. I think severe kudos go to these folks. My goodness.
That's good, Chuck. All right, can I continue? Citizens' concerns, we've heard some. Public hearings, none. We would now have our Town Administrators' report, and I think starting, it will be the meat of our F-16 budget discussion and override discussion with a joint committee, so you're welcome to stay, everyone, and, and watch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I have put together tonight is the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, first pass at the town of Newberry's operational budget. This, just so you know how I formulated it, probably on or around the beginning of December first, I sit down with most of the departmental managers, talk about what they have planned for the fiscal year, how they expect to accomplish it, how it's going to impact our operating budget. All the requests are initially brought into the doc, into the working document. Obviously, not all of the requests are funded because the resources are finite, not because the proposals don't lack merit. We start with the Board of Selectmen talking about some of their, their goals for the fiscal year. They've, I'd like to think we'd be able to accomplish them all in a single year. That doesn't happen. Some of the goals that you see up here tonight are goals that we've been talking about for the four years that I've been here and probably before that as well. So, public safety programming has been a priority of the Board of Selectmen and remains one. We, back in, I want to say two thousand nine, two thousand and ten, before I, I came on board, there were significant cuts made to public safety programming. We lost more than twenty-five percent of the programming, and it was all done in an effort to balance budgets. I don't expect that we'll ever get back to those levels, and I'm not so sure that we need to. You know, I'm trying to interpret what the community's desires are and the community's wants as well as balancing that with what the agencies need. Capital facility issues, obviously, we've had a conversation about the public safety facility. Developing a road inventory and pavement management program. I'm sure there's, everybody sitting here knows the conditions of our roads. By this time next year, I expect they'll be considerably different. We have undertaken, or we are undertaking a very aggressive approach to road reconstruction, repair this season. We have engaged consulting firm, Town Meeting provided us with funding to, first of all, put together an inventory, which we didn't have. We couldn't even really identify all town-owned roads versus private ways. And the importance of that is because we get Chapter Ninety funding from the state based on the mile, of miles of roadway that the community has. So, now we've put together a very clear, defined inventory, and that'll be the basis for a lot of the decisions that we'll make as far as prioritizing the roadways. Maintaining adequate reserves, one of the things that has been a significant concern over the years is the fact that not only have we not had reserves, but we've actually been in the negative in our reserves. That's not a good position to be in, obviously. The goal is to, if you, if you put asset replacement programs in place, you adequately fund your reserves, then when the, you know, you have these issues with the economy that come around every, you know, five to ten years, you're able to ride those times out. You're able to continue with your asset replacements. You're able to continue with the roads programs because you funded things adequately. So, that's been a significant priority, and, and we're making a lot of great progress in that respect. Updating the master plan, the last town meeting, we received funding. The capital, the Planning Board is going to be spearheading that with members of the Finance Committee. So, that will be underway soon. We have to be mindful of our unfunded liabilities. The OPEB one is looming large. That's about four million dollars. We don't expect to have that fully funded at any time soon, but we are making a commitment every year to put twenty-five, fifty thousand dollars in there, just so people are aware of it. Securing lease agreements, one of the things that was in our legislation was getting the lease agreements with the two individual fire companies as well as with the regional school district. We don't have a binding lease agreement in place for our elementary school. And reducing energy consumption and pursuing green initiatives are one of the new ones that we added on this year. Enhancing communications with the residents, Mrs. Sales, I think, brought that to our attention. And as a matter of fact, we had some vendors in today. Susan Neuss, who's spearheading that initiative, was talking to them about how we can become more user-friendly, more attractive website, get, you know, Twitter, all, all the current methods of communication active, so. The summary, the total operating budget is about seventeen and a half million dollars, up about two point two percent over last year's operating budget. The areas where we see the biggest increases, probably on a surprise to anyone that's been here for a while, benefits are up significantly this year, ten point five percent. Triton and Newberry both were hit pretty hard this year. We, we share the Meyer Insurance Program, and our health insurance premiums rose to a level that we haven't seen in the past. And I should note, too, that we, in Newberry, were, we negotiated higher co-pays. We've done everything that we can to bring the premiums down as much as we can in-house. And we also worked with an outside consultant to see if there was anything in addition. And basically, everything that they've suggested, we've already done. So, this wasn't something that we could necessarily control here. DPW with the, the majority of the increase that you see in DPW is what I talked about. There's an appropriation in there for additional money, funding for the road improvement program this year. And public safety primarily, we have some expenses in the Police Department, but the majority of it is going to be going towards the Fire Department, the changes that we'll see made during this budget cycle. Challenges, I think the Chairman talked about how significantly we rely on property taxes. That is the major component of our revenues. State aid, we get small bumps every year, but it's never really enough to make a difference. Everyone always says, "Well, come up with new revenues, come up with new revenues." Yeah, it's a great idea, but unfortunately, you know, we can't impose illegal taxes, and we can't create revenues. We have to work within the Department of Revenue's guidelines. The initiatives that are before the Board currently, there are two solar initiatives that are being discussed that could generate additional revenue for the town. And we are also in the very preliminary planning phases of a municipal parking facility on Plum Island on Oak Way that, that would generate revenue. On the expenditure side, the utility costs are always an issue. Our facilities manager was able to negotiate a very, a very good contract this year. But on the horizon, we, we see changes there. Retirement assessments, health insurance, the impact of the two-step method of, of calculating educational costs. This year, we were in an enviable position, but it, you know, it swings from year to year. Unfunded liabilities, OPEB, the, the good news is our, our contract negotiations are always an issue because you're not sure where that's gonna shake out. But our collective bargaining agreements were negotiated, and you'll see later on, I've, the increase this year is two percent, and that's across the board. That's throughout the collective bargaining agreements and the non-represented employees as well. So, property taxes are almost eighty percent. Local receipts, permitting fees, departmental receipts, those types of things are at eight percent. State aid is about four percent of our total operating revenues. And what we've done, and here again is the importance of having an available funding stream, is we've been able to supplement our operating budget about, you know, eight or nine percent over the last couple of years with the funding, with the available funds, the stabilization fund, free cash, sale of land, those types of accounts. We have limits, Proposition Two and a Half. So, what you see here, the four hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase which we have this year is typical to what we would see in any given year. The new growth goes up and down in the last four years. It's been as low as sixty thousand, but it was as high as a hundred and sixty thousand. So, I don't know that we have any significant subdivision growth on the horizon, Martha. I didn't think we did, no. So, so that's what we would expect to see. And this year, the proposal that's moving forward should be, should it be approved by the Board of Selectmen, would also have override, general overrides in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand. Local receipts don't fluctuate significantly, but, you know, you talk about where we've been and where we are, and you can see, we're still not back to where we were in two thousand and five. So, it's clear why we, you know, local receipts went down econo, in bad economies, that's when you see those types of things occur, so.
Because that's like excise taxes.
Exactly. Excise taxes, people don't buy new cars, those types of things. State aid, see where we were in two thousand and five. We're gradually coming up, but not enough, not quick enough. The available funds, you can see in two thousand and five, and I think it was two thousand and ten, where we went into the negative positions. And one of the important things when you're talking about free cash is not seeing this. You want to see a consistent amount of free cash, so, so it's staying stable. The, the rating agencies, the educated readers, when you're going out to issue bonds, they want to know that, that you've got a handle on the way you manage your finances and that it's, it's consistent, and it doesn't, you know, go up and down like we've done in the past. Right, right, right. So, that just kind of shows the big picture as far as the revenues goes. The, the amount, the percentage increases this year that, that are being projected. Again, you know, just want to caution everyone, these are all estimates. They're, they're certainly grounded in reality, but it's very early in the process. This is the first pass. As we meet the Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, the Board of Selectmen, these numbers will be revised, just based on some of the information provided tonight by the Chairman of the Building Committee. We'll make revisions. Expenditures, just to recap, gives you an idea of where the increases are this year. Continue to see debt decline. Those are percent of operating budget. Selectmen Jespersen discussed the percentage of spending on education. That's a commitment that the Board of Selectmen have made. They want to make sure, when we talked about the new revenue that comes in on an annual basis, that we commit fifty percent of that new revenue to fund our educational expenses. Generally speaking, the requests would exceed that fifty percent. This year, we're in a different situation. That's just the, the operating budget as a whole. And this shows, when we were talking about declining debt service, Chairman Remley, we were talking about the amount of debt we used to spend. You could see we committed almost fourteen percent of our operating budget to debt. It's down to about, you know, we've cut it almost in half in the last ten, eleven years based on our current proposal. So, it, it shows a pattern, and I think we're moving in the right direction. You can see we're increasing the amount of spending on education, but we're not necessarily compromising the other departments. And that was, that was a habit that we got into when, rather than approaching proposals for overrides or looking at funding things differently, we'd immediately go, "Oh, we, we have to cut everything." We need to, and I think we are, looking at each function of our municipal government very carefully, understanding what people want, what we are able to provide, what we are no longer able to provide. But this, this kind of shows you where we've been. Department budgets, line by line, and, and you've got all the, the greater detail. But just as an overview, as I mentioned, wages are, throughout the budget would be increasing at two percent. And we don't have any steps or columns or anything like that, so two percent is generally a two percent increase. The Finance Committee, we've added administrative support. And in the first proposal, I've increased the reserve fund by ten thousand dollars. We've, we've wanted to get that up for about, for four years, and we've been able to do it a little bit in this budget. Administration and finance, we've added two thousand dollars to the IT budget. Administration and finance, we've added $2,000 to the IT budget. We have things like the printers, the contracts with the webpage designers in this line item. What we don't have is if someone's computer goes down, we don't have any funding available for a new purchase. So that would allow us funding for, you know, one unit a year. If we don't have any failures, it would just close to free cash. And the postage, right now, we have a postage meter that the town accountant has to kind of do an analysis to break down and distribute to each of the departments, those costs. It's kind of time-consuming. So what we, what I propose this year is putting all of those funds into a single line item. Each of the departments will probably gain, you know, between 50 and maybe 200 or 300 dollars in their expense line item, but there's been no increases in those expense line items, at least since I've been here and probably long before that. Assessors, their HR is currently reviewing the wages, the administrative wages in that department because they were so low. And they do comparative analysis of all of the town, I think we had the presentation of the Finance Committee, of all of the employees to make sure everyone's where they should be. So we'd be addressing those wages. The town clerk, we would like to have an electronic town code book. That's the book of all of our bylaws, as well as a dog licensing software program. The deputy chief has been kind enough to put together a program, but I think we're moving to the next, next phase where, yeah, yeah, yeah. Planning Board has requested, since I've been here, probably even long before that, money for administrative support. This would provide for 10 hours a week in that department. Utility expenses, we talked about, are up about 10,000. Property and casualty insurances are up approximately 5 percent. That's an estimate at this time, which will likely be reduced. Police Department, the expense in the, the increase in the expense line item, we've hired a company to come in and do some cleaning because it's, it's pretty bad. Ammunition costs have doubled and the clothing allowance in the most recently negotiated contract went up, so that'll cover those costs. Fire Department, the Fire Department is the department that is going to be experiencing the most change throughout the year, not only in personnel, in operations, possibly in facilities. Basically, what we're looking at, and again, these requests have been consistent over the last, well, during the time that I've been here, over the last four years, we haven't been able to fund the additional personnel request. This is the first year, well, last year it was in the operation, operating budget, but it was removed. This is the first year that it's hopefully going to be funded. That includes a 2 percent increase for all of the employees, as well as the addition of the chief. We're going to change the way, the cost centers that the funds are taken from. We weren't accurately accounting for it, so things are going to be changing in that respect, as well as the establishment of the ambulance enterprise fund. Nothing in the operation is going to change. It's going to function the same way it does, but there's going to be much more accountability, and we're bringing it into line with the Department of Revenue's standards. The training budget is increasing, and the town would be increasing their lease payments to each of the companies for their increasing utility costs. Inspektual services, we're adding 15 hours of additional administrative support in that department as well. In the time that I've been here, we've kind of changed what it was. It used to be the building department. Now it's kind of morphed into inspektual services. It has all local permitting, a lot of permitting that we didn't used to do, that we should have been doing, that we're now doing. Buildings and grounds has been added to that function. IT, they've taken charge of all the IT issues and zoning issues. So it is requiring quite a bit more of additional administrative work. Triton, when we, or education as a whole, again, we have that cost-sharing unwritten policy, I guess, if you will, where we try to commit 50 percent of our new operating revenues to fund education. This year, due to the decreasing enrollment at Triton, we're actually seeing our assessment decrease slightly. Both Whittier and Essex North Shore are going up considerably based on the number of students. And one of the conversations that I had with the Finance Committee, we had talked about, you know, concern for how it might swing back around and how are we going to fund that? And we don't want to lose that levy capacity that we're currently committing to education. So what I did in this budget proposal is I took about $50,000 of what we would have committed to education, put that into the stabilization fund this year. We don't have to do that next year. I took about $52,000 and I put it into the road program again this year. It doesn't have to be funded next year. The 10,000 in the reserve fund, and then there's about $82,000 left over. But I had a conversation with Brian, and we've also spoken to DESE, and although the effort reduction in the formula is definitely a factor, the enrollment, the declining enrollment is much, much more of a factor. And the fact that we have 39 fewer students is what's driving it. So it's his opinion, and I agree, based on what he's shown me, that, you know, we shouldn't see another big swing in our minimum contribution. DPW, the collective bargaining agreement is funded. We currently have seven full-time employees. One position is open right now, but advertised, down from 13. Again, you know, do I expect that we'll get back up to 13? Probably not. But we're doing, you know, we're doing pretty well. We don't provide all of the services that we have in the past, but I haven't had significant public outcry about some of the services that we no longer provide. The road improvement, that's part of what we talked about, and the snow and ice removal override. Over the last four or five years, we have consistently had deficits. Our spending in 2014 was over 300,000. Our spending in '13 was 226, '11 was 262. 2012, we had a good year, we only spent 83,000. But we are consistently, you know, draining our reserve fund to cover these deficits. So even though the law allows you to run a deficit in this account and fund it later, you still want to budget appropriately. So that would, that would get us more in line with what we would spend in a season. Board of Health has requested, and I did fund in the first budget, 5,000 in expenses to pay for well monitoring, monitoring at the cap landfill. This is a requirement by DEP that we will be doing now. Veterans, that's just a very difficult budget to estimate, but based on the current veterans that we're providing services to now, we'd need a $3,800 increase. Debt service is down again this year. I think last year was the year where we saw almost a 30 percent reduction. So, you know, as Eric mentioned, now's the time, if we want to layer on that debt service, to have the least amount of impact to the annual tax burden that people are paying. We don't retirement system, that's an assessment. That's pretty significant, more than I've seen over the years I've been here. And group insurance, again, both Newbury and Triton were hit with that significant So in summation, you know, what I presented to you tonight, it tries to address as many of the priorities as we can, adding back some staffing, but doing it cautiously so we do it when we know we can keep it and we're not going to have to add back, cut, add back, cut. After four years, I feel pretty comfortable adding these, these small administrative positions back and the fire chief's position. The facility and equipment replacements have been addressed within the operating budget, with the exception of the public safety building and Triton's facility. Both of those would be addressed through debt exclusion override proposals. And Fire Department. Road improvements. So basically, the decisions that you'll have to discuss tonight and in the weeks to come are whether or not you want to put those overrides on, some of them, all of them. Tonight, we're going to have to have, just have a decision on the overrides for ballot printing and those types of things. And also, what we want to do, if the Board of Selectmen wants, you know, to move forward with the proposal presented by the Municipal Building Committee, if you want to put that on the town meeting warrant for the spring to take action on the land purchase. And then we, you know, go through line by line, anything else you want to discuss in the next coming weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Done with great expertise. Caleb the Wizard, can you hear me? What's the best way for everyone in the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to hear for the people on, you know, that are listening on television? Should we try to have them come to the table?
Yeah.
All right, can you guys move? And we'll give you some microphones. I'll, I'll talk to Chuck. Erica, we can bring that one right down, too. Someone wants to speak. Kind of hang it right over your shoulder. We're going to go around on one side? We can go around on one side or you want?
We'll figure it out.
Whatever you guys think. And we'll just make sure we get your microphone the best way we can. Sorry to have backs to you folks out there. You want to move up a little so you can hear a little more? Warren, Richie, everyone, come on up. All right. As I understand it, Tracy, or anyone else, your meeting is open, obviously, because you met at six?
Yes, our meeting is still open.
Okay. We're here to go over the warrant. So the best thing to do is proceed with going over the warrant. Should I do them article by article, or is there any that seem to be really easy? Or should I just do them by article by article?
Article by article is probably the best way.
All right, easy. I'll split you back and forth. You do one, I'll do the next one. Go ahead. And Chuck, you can take one.
Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of XXXXX or any other sum from the free cash to the snow and ice account over the existing deficit balance in this account. The town of Newbury appropriated 155,000 to cover the cost associated with removal of snow and ice. At this point, we have spent a considerable sum more than that, which I don't have written down in front of me. Although there is a provision allowing the deficit spending of this account, you must cover the deficit prior to close of the fiscal year, June 30th. The transfer will offset the current deficit.
Now, are we looking to put back, what are we looking to put in, 100,000?
This is the special town.
This is special.
This is just to cover the deficit, which is currently at 136,457.
So it looks like we have to put that back in?
Yeah, we have to put that back in, and that would be an appropriation for free cash.
136?
And that's to cover the expenditures in FY '15. This is not talking, this is not override going forward. This is just covering the hell of a winter we just had.
And that's 136 what, Trace?
136,457 currently.
Just a point of clarification, we do not have to finalize the warrant articles tonight.
Right.
Approval, approval.
That is.
Primary goal is to consider ballot questions.
Yes.
It's time-sensitive tonight.
Right. So this warrant doesn't have to be done until two weeks before? When do we have to have?
We have to print books and everything, so the warrant, in the front page of your book, like you have a calendar.
We should probably. We're here.
By the 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, let's, I would just suggest that we address the ballot questions first because there could be spirited discussion on those, and those have to be addressed tonight with some affirmative, some action taken by, by the Board of Selectmen in order to qualify in time for the upcoming election.
We only have two things on a special town meeting.
Oh, yeah, you can get that done. That's a good point. Get that one out of the way. Chuck, read number two. We're going to, go ahead.
Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of 14,763,65, or any other sum from the DPW garage account, whatever those numbers are, to the public building property-related services account.
The rationale is building and grounds department has added cleaning services to the council and agent, DPW facility inspectional service trailer, and one additional day at the library. Transfer will cover those costs and additional septic service costs required this fiscal year. Those are what you talked about here?
Yeah.
Yep. Again, that's current. We're going to have to take and push them out again next year and fund them, right?
Yeah, this is, but this is just to cover the FY '15.
Right, so none of us are really, anything wrong with that, right? So, all right, so. Procedure. You want to head to overrides? Yeah, I think we should, yep. We've got a lot more time to deal with the warrant than we do the, we've got about, till midnight, no, to do the ballot questions. Because this is, this is the last meeting that you're going to have before.
Yeah, we'd need votes.
We have a meeting a week from.
Page two.
Change glasses. Go ahead. Someone read the first one that's got.
The first one for consideration would be Triton Regional School Stadium Project.
All right, let's go.
Oh, one more page.
All right.
Good. There you are.
Okay. All right, who read it? Tracy, did you read that?
Mm-hmm.
And what was it again?
Triton Regional School Stadium Project, to see if we would propose an override to pay for the cost of renovating Triton Stadium.
Does, I know we're all knowledgeable here, Tracy, can you go over real quickly the difference between override, debt exclusion, and the third mechanism?
Sure. A general override would go on to the tax rate permanently, so any increase would, would be forever. A debt exclusion override, we would go out, like in the case of the Triton project, we would go out and we would issue debt for the project costs and have a very defined payment for each year, if we go out for 20 years or 25 years. And that payment would, in the case of Triton, would be distributed on a per pupil basis among the three communities in the district. And we would pay that cost for 20, 25 years. When the debt's paid off, it goes off of your taxes.
Which is the library project once upon a time, like all of these things that we see that debt coming down, is that we've been paying it off. Once it goes.
Triton incurs the debt.
Triton incurs the debt, but we collect it, and it's basically a pass-through. We collect from the voters, we pay to the debt. When it's, debt's gone, that money's no longer collected.
Right.
Now, we're projecting to put this in the form of the debt exclusion on the ballot. And when will they be put in the stadium project forward to us?
First of all, all three, all three towns have to vote in favor of it.
Yep.
Or two out of three, if the third one doesn't vote at all.
Does it have to be in this timeframe, Frank? Or?
No. Well, it has, has, the way it's proposed here is it needs to happen over the next couple of months, I think. And, and then with, there's a short window in which the debt. And, and then with, there's a short window in which the debt can be incurred and the project can go forward.
I guess what I'm asking, and let's talk about it so we really come to the conclusion that is succinct, succinct definition. If we do this now, which I have no problem with. Do we have to do it now because it hasn't been presented to us yet? I mean.
We have to either do it in the spring or the fall.
And that's right. It would need a ballot election.
Now, did you guys talk about that at your meeting?
Yes.
Significantly.
I'm game and I'm ready, let's go. Because I figured you guys, in all your wisdom, talked about that. So, Gene, go.
Mr. Chairman, I think we made a recommendation.
We made a recommendation. All right, where is it?
Mr. Chairman?
All right.
Well, the recommendation that we have is to go forward with this now. And because it's absolutely necessary, there's no one that disagrees that this is an important project for, for education and for Triton. Difficulty comes this year with the shifting sands of budgeting where Raleigh has a problem with, with what they were assessed. It shifted in our favor this year, formula and, and the enrollment drop. So it's questionable, they, they're gonna put it on their ballot. Salisbury is not. But we felt that it's better to go forward now because it'll cost us again for another election in the fall, which we may have to do anyway to do this. And, and everyone's in favor and it's up to the voters now as to whether they want to incur the, we're rather modest expense to do this. We're a third of, of the project, basically, as, but it's each, each year's assessment. And what was voted with the school committee and with the communications group at Triton was to go for a twenty-year bond, which reduces the annual cost substantially. And we're told now that Tracy has found out that it's gonna be less than seventy thousand a year for, for us. It may be a little higher than that for Salisbury. It's all gonna be based on enrollment each year. So, so it'll be shifting a little bit. So what we should do with this is put it on the ballot as a not to exceed figure. And it'll be contingent on, on enrollment each year, but it'll be within a, a range.
I can tell Gene wants to talk.
I don't, just a correction, I think. I don't think you actually put the number on the ballot. The number is what would appear on the warrant.
Right.
Okay. Pull that, pull that to you, Gene.
The numbers don't appear on, on the ballot question, which is, the ballot question has to be written according to state law. And, and that will be done probably with Tracy and town council. But, but for discussion purposes, it's, we anticipate it to be less than seventy thousand dollars.
You said a little louder, I'm sorry.
Seventy thousand.
Less than seventy thousand dollars, we anticipate. And each year, it's dependent on, as Frank mentioned, how the enrollment breaks out. It's the way the agreement reads, the Triton agreement reads.
I have voted on debt exclusions many times before and there was always a number associated with the debt exclusion on the ballot question. Otherwise, how do you know whether it's fifty or five hundred thousand dollars? And it has to be.
We'll let town council answer that question.
Actually, it's bond council that drafts it.
It's bond council that drafts it.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, the capital planning committee did, did extensive reviews of this request and approved the capital expenditure at our meeting. The justification was solid, the need is acute, and it does have a lot of contingencies for making sure that the proper services of sports and athletics on a field will be continued at the stadium. What has occurred since our last meeting is that there's been some delay in when the, the timing of this. And our big discussion was, should we go ahead and put it on the ballot for our citizens to consider? And the consensus of the committee is, let's put it on the ballot now, see what happens, see what the reaction is. There's a group of people that need to get the word out that this is a much needed improvement of the services there. As you may know, the stadium seating capacity that exists at that field has been condemned or by as non-functional. So, and the track is non-functional, so they're operating without the services of an adequate field, stadium, and/or track. So they wanted to get this thing fast-tracked with this so they could get it open by the September timeframe, but it looks like that will not occur. But for the town of Newbury and our, our commitment, we are four square behind the project and we believe it's, it's been well justified. It's, it's an acute need for our educational system.
And I believe that going forward with the debt exclusion over a general override is a much wiser economic way to do it because otherwise we're squeezing our operating budget again. So for anyone who's listening to this, this is why incurring debt at this far, this large project seems to be the way to go rather than trying to fund it out of an ongoing operating budget.
Simplistically speaking. If Triton's not rolling this out until the fall. It seems to me, this is just me. It seems that it might not have the momentum or support, and I might be wrong. But if this fails, do we intend to put it again on the November as a special? You know, if it fails at this ballot, I mean, is this the death knell for us? We're gonna be the town that kills it?
No. Can we discuss that same, because some of us had that same concern. But we felt that now was the time to put it on and it's somewhat.
Exploratory somewhat.
It's incumbent upon the folks to get the word out that. That this is, you know, and I think there's unanimous support on the part of all of the town officials for the project. And I think it's certainly, there would be significant support on the part of parents of kids attending the schools, so.
All right, I, I, I'll ask, I'm gonna kind of, and I kind of have a little thoughts with Bob, though. I mean, I'm surprised we can't kind of write in what we're.
The lawyers will draft that.
They'll draft it.
Yep.
I mean, I, but I didn't.
It's clarified tonight that it's a twenty-year commitment to approximately seventy thousand dollars a year or one point four million dollar.
Right.
Yes, we're not talking about Triton building an eleven million dollar stadium. We are.
I think it's pretty good.
We feel good about a one point four million dollar.
The more clarification we have.
The better. Yeah, no.
There's gotta be some, some questions for you guys. What do you think?
I think we passed it around enough. Yeah, my feeling is that given the bond prices at, right now, if we can move this project forward quickly before the federal government starts increasing rates. I think the town stands to benefit financially, the students benefit the sooner this happens. I see no reason not to move forward with it as soon as we can.
I'm correct and understanding this is gonna raise the average tax rate twenty-five dollars a year. I mean, for twenty-five dollars a year is apparent.
Eighty thousand. If it's down to seventy, then it's gonna be down.
These are all estimates.
Estimates, yeah.
I think for twenty-five dollars a year, now is the time to improve Triton Stadium. Those stands are in bad shape in the nineties when I attended. And that was a while ago.
There, there's also a proposal that they expect a very significant rental activity there with teams and paying to use the facility. And we were discussing with the, with the school committee that their initial plan was to, they would retain that revenue for subsequent improvements to the field when they would come due. The feeling of the, of the committee is still not a hundred percent clear, was that they would take that revenue and try to lower the debt as it has occurred. So they wouldn't retain rental income on the field and try to keep it, so they would use it when they need to refurbish the track or refurbish the stadium grounds. That they would use the revenue that they have for rental, which they think can be substantial. That they would use that to pay down debt before they issued to us our commitment annually. And I believe that in the presentation to town meeting, those are key factors that, that the citizens should know that it's gonna somewhat pay for itself, not exactly, but there will be some contribution from the usage of the fields.
Well, I think also, Larry. Simplistically, once again, Gene and Erica were, and Ann Bob were pretty insightful into the fact that it could be a figure up to. I mean, when they roll this out in the fall, someone could come along and lower that amount pretty substantially with a donation.
Correct.
A whole new.
Yeah.
Whole new aura on what people are hoping for.
Correct, but they, they cannot announce that because there's some conflict of interest that this substantial donor may be a bidder on some of the projects that would be under construction.
Granted, or there could be new ones.
That's correct. So they can't divulge that.
I think it's imperative that it, it could be a figure up to. Our exposure could be less.
Yes.
Correct.
And that's always so hard to take and convey to the people that are at the ballot. So are we looking for a motion to put this on the warrant?
On the ballot.
In the form of a, thank you, you would like a, in the form of a vote? So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to put the Triton Stadium Project on the ballot for the May town meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion among my board?
For the election. So for the May elections.
The election.
May election.
You could tell I was listening. Any discussion, guys? All those in favor?
Aye.
Snow and ice removal.
Is that unanimous?
Yes. Snow and ice removal, Tracy, you wanna maybe talk about the override here again?
Yep, this would be a general override, increasing the line item by a hundred thousand dollars would put, puts us more in line with what the last five-year average spending is. So that would be a permanent override on the tax rate.
Okay. Any questions among the board as to what that is for us? That's gonna be a general override that should pass, will exist there at all times for always.
Is that gonna be enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what did you guys think?
We, we feel this is the right thing to do. Actually, last year, I believe, we added another fifty thousand. But it wasn't enough, obviously. You know, assuming we might have another year like this one, we're a hundred and thirty.
We had a hundred, we're gonna have a worse one, huh? Okay, sorry.
How could it get worse?
No, we, we felt that, that the hundred thousand is, is appropriate. It's about the right thing to do.
And your vote was what?
It was unanimous.
To put this on.
Any discussion with my board?
None.
What have we been spending consistently? It sounds like about twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two thousand, well.
Almost three hundred this year.
Yeah, we're, we're over, we're close to three hundred this year, over three hundred last year, two twenty-six in two thousand thirteen. Two thousand twelve was the good year, eighty-three thousand. Two thousand eleven was two hundred and sixty-two thousand. We're only appropriating a hundred and fifty-five. So we're nowhere near.
If this goes through, what would the figure be?
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five.
So it's likely we will continue to exceed the budget.
Possibly have a deficit, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and of course, the good thing about this particular line item is if you don't spend it, it goes back to free cash.
I entertain a motion. Oh, JR, anything?
Nope.
Okay, motion, guys?
A motion to put snow and ice removal as a general override of a hundred thousand on the May ballot?
Second motion.
Any discussion among the board?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, is it impact on taxes estimated?
I, I believe it's out to the side, it says thirty-two dollars, Jen.
A year.
Yes.
Correct.
Hey, Bob? Well, we're going pretty easy so far. Are you, are you hoping it gets worse?
We're not there yet.
Okay. All right, false hope, right? All right. All right, can, Tracy, can, you're doing a good job. Can you go follow with the Republican poll for the program? Why do you want to take a check?
No. The, the next one would be a debt exclusion override, so it's asking for the authorization to allow us to spend money for the public safety facility design and engineering costs, which in the latest proposal are approximately.
Nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred and.
Eighty.
Eighty thousand?
Nine hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred forty-eight.
Did we skip one?
Yes, we did.
It did. On purpose.
Oh.
Yeah.
I, I knew that.
Actually, I had a number differently.
But no, it's actually.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, once again, capital planning looked closely at the requirements for this facility design engineering study and did approve it at the amount that is presented here at the five hundred thousand level. Since the recent changes in the, the project with.
Capital planning.
Capital planning. In the, in the recent change of the project where the fire station has now reappeared, that number has changed as a result from the five hundred to the nine eighty, as mentioned earlier. But the, the concept and the, the need and acute requirements of the public safety facility still exist. And we will take that up at our next meeting, but it should be with committee, it should be potentially approved as well.
And was the Finance Committee recommending nine eighty?
We didn't have the number at the time of our meeting because we were waiting for Eric's presentation.
Do you need to talk again?
I think the way we left it, Mr. Chairman, was is that in a general sense, we are in favor of presenting this as a debt exclusion to the community.
Yes.
We didn't have the exact number, which I think we now have from the most capable municipal building chairman, Eric. So I think, should we take a, a final vote on our recommendation of the?
I, I would say so. Yes.
You make that in a follow-up motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that. We add this, we recommend the ballot question for debt exclusion at, up to nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Second.
A second.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have recommended it to you guys.
Do we have a per household number with the change?
Not. I have a per household number that is an estimate for the, no, for the entire project. But not for.
Not for design fees.
Not for just the design fees.
Multiply thirty-two times ten.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, take, yeah, thirty-two, yeah.
Three hundred and twenty dollars. Yep. It's already come up, three twenty-five. I think it's three twenty-five was his number in his presentation earlier this evening, what it would cost per household, average household. Three hundred twenty-five.
I'm ready.
No, no, no. Oh, wait, timeout.
Wait, the, the.
That's all right.
The amounts that you see in your book, the hundred and seventy-five to the two hundred and fifty per year.
Yep.
That was the cost for the construction of the combined police station town hall. So I'll have to update those numbers.
That, that one seventy-five and two fifty is all it's gonna cost us to build a place?
Yeah, per year for the debt service on the average taxpayer's bill.
That's all?
No, no, that's to be clear.
Did you get the number?
Yeah, I'll, I'll calculate it.
This is his number, three forty-eight.
I'll recalculate and get it to Jim.
I saw that.
That's the number that he computed.
That's what he had.
That's correct. More accurate than what we're at, because we had.
This is on the whole project.
That's the whole project.
The whole project would be about three.
Three forty-six.
Three forty-six, but this is not.
This is just the design.
This is just the design.
That's what Eric had in his.
No, that's total.
That's total.
That's total construction.
That's total construction would be three forty.
But the ballot is just the design.
The ballot would be just the design.
Do we need to reflect the cost, JR, or ask any idea how we do that?
No, not, no. No, you're just voting on whether or not to put it on. The lawyers draw up the ballot language, consistent with the, the general law. And then the numbers are in the motions and in the article, and I.
And in our, in our rationales.
In our rationales, yeah.
In the, in the explanations and the rationales, but they're not.
So we'll update those continuously as we get closer to town meeting, based on the interest rates, based on.
Yeah.
Just for a clarification, that number on the last page.
Talk loud, Eric.
The number on the last page of three hundred and forty-six dollars for the yearly increase of the average assessed value home is based on the amount to be financed.
The total project.
Take the total project cost.
Whole project.
No, if you take the whole project cost, eleven point six million, you take out the design fees that we're just talking about right now, because those will be asked for first in this, this upcoming annual town meeting. Then in the next town meeting, once the design is done, and once we have a final cost, you will take the total project cost minus these portions of design fees that are spent, and you'll have a leftover amount to be financed, which is about ten point six million. So the numbers I reported of increase is the amount to be financed.
So what, pardon my ignorance, what will the.
So what, pardon my ignorance, what will the design phase, as we think we're looking at it right now, cost the average household?
It's gotta be calculated.
You just can't, you just can't do it.
No. I'd rather do it.
Let it be done directly.
And give you the right number.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be important to just clarify that ballot questions go to the voters of the town and not, not to, as a warrant article at town meeting.
Right.
Just, just to add clarification to Eric's comment, where it was, these are ballot questions that then only get presented to the town, and it's the will of the town voters that determine the outcome.
It needs affirmative vote of both.
Right, in order to go forward with the design phase, we need to have, it needs to pass on the ballot, and it needs to pass at town meeting.
Yep.
So in order to have that happen, I'd like to make a motion that we place the public safety facility design and engineering debt exclusion override on the ballot.
Now we have a second. Do we have any discussion among the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, who seconded it? I'm sorry.
Okay.
Chuck.
What, yes?
Unanimous, right?
Yes.
Now, I'm a little lost. Do we have an improvement program?
That's gonna be last. That's okay.
Totally cleared or?
Okay, the next one is the...
Keep an eye on your toaster.
The next one is, is being proposed as a capital override, and that would be to pay the balance of the recently purchased fire pumper truck. By doing so, we could save approximately sixty thousand dollars in interest costs. Again, the number that you see in your book, that's seventeen dollars, that was a debt exclusion override to pay the fifty-five-thousand-dollar annual payment, but in the discussions we had earlier tonight, the finance committee would prefer to recommend a capital exclusion, one and done, override of, what's the balance?
Four-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, four-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-seven-thirty-six-seventeen. Pay that off, yeah, and so that would be paid off. We wouldn't have to pay any further debt service. You'd have a one-time impact on your tax rate, and that would be it, and I will recalculate that.
And possibly, the way some of the other things fell, it might be a good time to do this? I mean, what was the, your recommendation was what?
Unanimous.
Yeah.
What was your rationale?
Well, you've got, got the savings of sixty thousand dollars, and there's nothing that we're doing with money that is going to get that kind of return. You know, just getting rid of debt is the smartest thing we can do in, in this economy with these interest rates. When you have money, you're not making anything out of it. If you can get rid of debt, that savings goes right to the operating budget. You know, it's, it's just a smart way to...
It also doesn't constrain the other available capital.
Right.
In subsequent years. Yeah, right.
Your unanimous from the finance committee, do I have a motion from the selectmen?
Motion to put the fire truck purchase on the ballot as a one-time capital override with the number, exact number, somewhere more than four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
I will second that.
Now, any discussion, guys? Any clarity that you need at this point?
So I just wanna clarify for people who may be watching, this, a one-time capital override does not increase, not like the general overrides. It will be this year and this year only that we pay this increase in our taxes. And the next year, it will be off the books entirely. We will own the truck, and we will pay nothing more for it beyond maintenance.
One thing it'll be interesting to see in the justification is why it's a...
Come on up a little closer to that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if I should be talking.
Whether it, why is, why is it a good idea to retire net debt now when it's also a good idea, you know, let's, let's load up on debt because borrowing costs are so cheap and likely to rise? So there seems to be...
Let me talk to them.
Sure.
Pull that microphone close.
Sure. It's, it's a good question. The reason it is, in this particular case, good to retire the debt is we have, we have the availability of some funds to retire this debt. Those funds are not earning us the kind of money that would offset this debt. This is a capital expense. We do have some capital expenditure ability through an override, and it saves sixty thousand dollars. Now, when we look for something like the stadium or the public safety facility, we are talking about a much, much bigger item. We just don't have that kind of ability. However, if you were listening, when Larry spoke about debt and the fact that the folks from Triton came in and said, "We have the ability to generate some extra cash with this. We'd like to hold on to it." We said, "Not on your life. We're gonna get rid of debt because that is the best thing we can do with available funds, if they're available, and then if we need to do something later, we would either raise the money from expenditure, from our, our available funds," or something like that. But everything we can do, and, and we have been doing, to manage the funds that we have, quite frankly, as frugally as possible, we are doing. And so that's why this is, we've looked at this as an opportunity to get that done and, and save that money. A very good question, though.
I can comment on it. The town has approved the purchase of the equipment. We're gonna pay for that truck one way or another. So the concept is, what is the most beneficial way to pay for it? If this doesn't get approved and it's turned down, we still will be paying the debt on that truck out of our operation budget, which is what we are now very concerned with. We don't wanna hamstring the town's operation budget in, to be able to move forward. So it's kind of a question of where, how you wanna do it. It's gonna get paid anyways, and we've already, town's already approved it. Now we're gonna say, maybe we think right now the best, with our available funds, we could pay it off and save that sixty thousand per, and use that downstream for other, other benefits.
You know, it's a question, probably this doesn't, is not a good analogy. I mean, I'm a sportsman, I'm a conservationist, so if I make a footprint in nature by going clamming or fishing and I take something away, it has a tendency to be able to fill back in because I'm not being excessive. Am I to think that this is a good time in our budgeting process and cycle that we are relatively sound and that we can take that money and use it to alleviate a tremendous amount of debt burden going forward, if we had to carry it forward, and, you know, the hole will kinda fill in? Is this a good time for this, Tracy?
Yeah, and to Mr. Sales' point, too, when we were talking about Triton and the public safety debt, we, over the last couple of years, have retired significant amount of debt exclusion override. So your, the, the goal is to layer on the new debt as we retire the old debt. So your annual tax burden that you're paying out of your pocket doesn't see big fluctuations. So that's, they're kinda two separate issues.
So this is kind of the managing and, and visioning and forecasting of which we're supposed to be good at in working. All right, so.
One of the, pardon me, so not to commandeer the, and I'll, I'll just leave this comment because one of the things that, I guess, to my understanding, what you, your justification was, rightly or wrongly, this is what I took from it, was some are big projects, this is a smaller sum of money, and so therefore, and I understand that we're not getting a lot for our current cap, just like I don't have, I'm not getting a hit a lot of interest from my bank account, right? And you're not putting it into longer-term or riskier funds because you know you need to pay for whatever reason. The size of the two are, seem to be the primary driver for the justification. Is that correct? The size of the two are, are a significant driver, and, and the fact is, we have already committed to the truck, okay? It's just a question for the voters of, pay it now and save the sixty thousand dollars, or pay it over time and, and use that sixty thousand dollars. As opposed to the larger project, which you're still trying to get the go-ahead for? As opposed to the larger project where we don't have a prayer of saying, "Let's, let's just raise the taxes for everybody, fifteen thousand dollars this year, and we're done." Okay, I get it. Thank you very much.
And somehow, I think, to answer that question, that I think the time is good. I mean, there's been other times in the history of our town when we maybe couldn't do this. So where are we? Discussion, and are we ready for vote? Are we at that point?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, are we, where we supposedly were on number three? Are we back at road improvements programs?
Road improvement program. Actually, do you wanna talk about how you'd like to see that presented? It's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, um...
Yes.
General or other override?
Okay. I brought this up, discussed it with Tracy and some of the other selectmen on one of the other meetings. I have noticed other towns add to their chapter ninety money by having a road improvement program where you pave more roads on top of the chapter ninety. You do it with an override. Some towns do it with a one-year debt exclusion override for a specific road. Others do it with this, just like it is presented right here. It is every year on a capital override. That money is a line item that goes into the roads every year, roads and bridges, I might add. We have two bridges right now that need a lot of work. We need to, we have a drainage system in Byfield that has to be dug up and already done before we can pave, and I thought this would be a good idea. Evidently, we don't have a solid number on what all the roads will cost to improve. We're getting there. We will have that in a while. I thought we could put this on the ballot now, but if I can't have a solid number for it, finance committee doesn't wanna go with it because we don't have that solid number, I understand. Threw the idea out there to see how everybody feels on it. We need better roads. No two ways about it. We have to throw a lot of money at the roads. This is the way to do it. I will leave it at that.
I think Chuck's idea is proactive and certainly forward-thinking. What was the discussion and recommendation that you guys had? Did it go before you guys?
Yes.
Did you discuss it? Where were you?
We, we tabled it because there was some disagreement over whether or not we, we've got a sound enough argument for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar override ballot question at this point. We don't have this road study yet from the engineer. We don't really have a road plan yet. We don't know if it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or a million dollars a year, but we know it's expensive when we, the road, we know, everybody knows the roads are in bad shape, and we need to do something. And we have also, Tracy informed us, that we've got a million dollars in chapter ninety money set aside this year that we can use, which is good, good news. But, but repaving Elm Street alone, and it wasn't all of Elm Street, costs over eight-hundred-thousand dollars. So it, it's kind of a pig in a poke. You don't really know. It feels like a swag, what I call a swag, or a heroic estimate, we used to call it.
And part of that would be made clearer, do we have a million bucks we can spend?
Yes, we do. And that will be spent this season.
Oh. And part of it's gonna be made clearer, you guys feel, by the road study because it's gonna prioritize expectations or...
Absolutely. We should have, and we should have recommendations about what to do and how we develop this into a full-blown road plan and the software we're gonna get to keep up with our roads and so forth.
See, I think that, I mean, we were very, we were unanimous last year in recommending going forward with the road improvement software and pro, and plan, and I think that we are still as committed to the overall idea of a plan to guide us rather than having it be a piecemeal, like, "I think this road needs it," or "The people over here are yelling more, so they get the road." I think that we understand that principle. What we're uncomfortable with, if I can speak, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel that right now, at this point, we're not sure what type of override this would be, and very feeling, very uncomfortable about where we don't know the number, like where that study not being...
When, and Chuck, I'm gonna shut up immediately.
No, no, no.
But that's...
But when, I mean, certainly, when are the results of the road study available?
We had our first draft last Friday.
So it's still gonna be ongoing?
Mm-hmm.
Because certainly the road study will come forward, and probably with what, James Saret and other people, you'll start to look forward.
James and I met with the engineers, yes.
And understand the needs. Look, where do you stand with that information, Chuck?
All right. Would you folks entertain a, a one-year, say, a debt exclusion override for one year only to add two-hundred-and-fifty to it? Then we will revisit with the real plan in front of you next year.
I have a question.
Go right ahead, sir.
We have a million dollars plus whatever's in the budget. So how much do we have available to us now, or in FY sixteen for road improvement?
There's only, um...
I saw another fifty or something.
Another fifty thousand. I, we will spend it all this season, I can assure you. And even if you moved forward with a general override of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it wouldn't be anywhere near enough for what we need to...
My question is, how, my, my question is... We haven't done over a million dollars worth of roadwork in a year, in a long time, right?
Well, Elm Street was how much?
Eight-hundred thousand. That was a while ago. What I'm saying is, how much, how much work can we do in a season?
I, I think what Gene's saying, that was a...
You do two million dollars worth of work, three million dollars?
He probably could keep, yeah, but I mean, that was located on one road, right, Gene?
We found it out.
You're thinking that we're gonna be looking at, you know, repair and a lot...
Looking at the urgency of the two-fifty. I mean, if you look at all the roads, it's urgent.
I have to say one thing, and...
And it's just a question.
Someone wants to speak. I have to say one thing.
It's just a question.
As we talk about this, Chuck, you know more about roads than I do and probably anyone here, I think. Maybe not more than the people that are doing the study, though.
That's true.
Or James. So it's up to you to make and, 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 you know, work with us a little bit to make our understanding broader. But certainly, what Chuck, I don't know if he said, and I missed it, this is done in a lot of towns, especially after some of the poor conditions people, the roads are in. But I understand it's a big step, too. Bob?
I, I think that, first, we agree collectively with the approach. But it's a bit early, where that town meeting approved the funding to do the study. We don't quite have the results of the study in. As the municipal building committee, they presented a complete package, and we, we took action on it. So I, I think this is the process we, we should probably be looking at, but I, I think it's a bit early to address it today, or...
As a capital override, you mean, if we did a one-year?
I think we should do it right, Chuck, because that's what the voters are entitled to. And I think we're already committed to spending sixty-odd thousand dollars to do the study. Let's see what the fruits of the study are, and then, then react there, and, and it could be, an amount that could be higher than the, the two-fifty. I, I think the, the whole thought process is, is the sound way to, to approach this, but it's just, in my mind, a bit early to, to address it tonight.
I feel it's too early to, to put something in that could have...
So what we're looking at is probably not an approval by the finance committee.
You are correct.
Yes.
So...
Well, thank you for considering it anyways, okay?
We still, we're still gonna vote.
Yeah.
We're still gonna vote.
Don't misunderstand that.
Well, I think, and I think everyone, through this whole process, this has nothing to do with the idea of maybe doing this in the future. I think everyone's trying to vision for the fact, when will the time be right? And, you know, almost, you know, we've got other things on this, and I don't know, but maybe there's never a right time. But should, I was gonna say, should we take and make a motion, but before we do that, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I would strongly suggest that, once the engineer report is, is submitted, that we have a group, a committee, whatever, to sit down with the engineer and listen to their recommendations and look at what their priorities are for road improvement. They'll grade every road, if they do it the way I've seen it done before. They'll grade every road in Newberry in terms of condition on a number of, of, of elements. And, and they'll be able to tell us which roads are in desperate need, which roads are in need, and which roads can we put off for a while. And, and it, we should listen to the experts tell us, and, and they can even recommend to us what our costs are likely gonna be over a period of time, and help us develop that road improvement... over a period of time and help us develop that road improvement plan. And then we'll know better whether or not we can continue to coast on chapter ninety, or we'll have to add local funds to it as well.
This is very much, Mr. Chairman, like, like the discussion we had on maintenance, capital maintenance. Where we said, for instance, when we put up the new facility, uh, or we look at the barn, or we look at something else. We have to budget in the, the maintenance. Well, this is, this is a capital, you know, the roads are, are part of our capital. And we have to figure in the right maintenance and come up with basically in long-term, Chuck, a, a target number that says, when we start doing roads, it's much like painting the Tobin Bridge, we're always doing roads. Every year, we're going to do roads.
I think that's what Chuck's idea.
And I think that's, I think what we're, I feel like we're trying, we're trying to work towards that, but we're just waiting for full information.
I think maybe Chuck too, what the thing is in people's minds. And this is gonna be for you to either decide to make a motion or you could just table it for us to make a motion on. I think what I'm looking at is, I think the idea is good. I think from the feedback I heard from the finance committee, they all think it's, uh, a good idea and has, has some merit in doing. I think it's gonna be a little hard to decide on a figure. You mean, is it two hundred and fifty-five? Is it two, is it two hun- is it a hundred and twenty-five each year? What will the figure be?
I'm perfectly willing to wait until these figures come in. If we can get them done in time, I will bring it back before the boards. Okay? If not, well, then we're gonna have to wait one more year and we'll have really good figures by then.
And really bad ones.
Uh, where it's a ballot question too, it's, it's important that it really be in that final format. Because it's gonna be determined by all the voters of the town.
I suggest it doesn't have to wait for another year. If we get done with the, the road improvement study this, this summer, we could put it on the ballot again in the fall. That's a special election, special election, right?
We're trying to avoid a special election.
We may have one.
If we have one, if we have one, maybe then, maybe then we can flip it together, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We may have another side of that.
Yep.
To my mind, we get a lot, I hear a lot of complaints about our roads. We can always spend more than we have. So I don't see why delay until we have the perfect number to start talking about this with the electorate makes sense. I'd rather start this conversation sooner rather than later. Even if it's defeated in the ballot question, I'd rather have it as a valid question so it's in people's minds. Um, I don't know, that may not be the most fiscally responsible way to proceed with road planning. But I feel like there's such an expense and we're at a deficit with our roads that starting the discussion has value. And I can understand the argument from the financial committee against it, but I, I think there's some value in it.
Ball's your court.
Yeah, I mean, make, make them, tell you what, make a motion here and then we'll discuss it.
Well, since I've made them all, I'll make this one too. I make a motion that we place road improvement program on the ballot as a general override to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would entail an estimated tax impact of eighty dollars a year.
Second the motion.
All right, now for discussion. So if I illuminate that motion, we are gonna vote to put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar override that'll exist every year going forward from now until hell freezes over.
Which, given this past winter, might not be that long.
So. That was, let's discuss that and, and at least for me, I mean, I think I need to be, not that my vote is only one of four. I think I need to be, um, swayed a little bit. Go ahead.
Could we trim the number down? I mean, you don't have to do a whole road, do you? Say if we made it a hundred, could you do a hundred thousand dollars worth of repaving and stop? Because I mean, like you were saying about underwork. To me, I'm not a road building expert, but to me, a road's like a roof. When you get holes in the road, then you start having problems with the underlayman.
I'll throw this out there.
It might be a good way to catch.
Okay, Moody Street, we did that over. That was ninety-six thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you can overlay a road for.
As long as it hasn't been like go too far.
Moody Street's a fairly long road.
Right.
So if we can get one more road done, I'd be ecstatic.
I mean, I have to say that, did we start, did, did it start out there for a minute, there's a capital override of two fifty for one year?
No.
No, it's always gonna be a debt exclusion, general override.
I did general, in what I proposed.
I know you did on this. Capital override, which would have been one year, so that's.
Yeah, that's how Groveland does theirs.
But that's what threw me off, all right. Um, I think what people have to understand is it's not a whole road. I mean, we're not gonna maybe pave a whole road, but this is gonna go into improving the roads. It might be just filling portholes or any of those small.
A long way, I know.
So, I mean, I don't know. So let's, and.
Chuck, how do you feel about reducing the number? Do you think this is where we should be, given what you know about the budget and the roads?
I'm gonna pass it to you.
I assure you, we could spend whatever you appropriate.
Okay. Goodness said it better.
How'd that help you?
Goodness said it better.
A hundred thousand would be great to add to the, what, we have forty-eight thousand last year. Um, if we could add a hundred thousand, that would be super.
Does it have to be a general, or could it be a yearly? I mean, I know a general would be.
Then we would have to reintroduce it every year.
General, you are never gonna catch up.
Ever, ever catch up.
Two hundred and fifty, you.
You, we might, we might.
So.
You know, we don't have a, a, a solid number, but we know from looking at roads and road construction and what those costs are. Two hundred and fifty, it's not a lot.
And the thing is, when you watch fuel go up, you know hot top's going right up with it, 'cause that is oil.
We, we could conservatively estimate that our road deficiencies are north of ten million dollars.
Easily, yep.
And, and I think that would be the, the minimum. The, the report could give us a, a, a high, far higher number. And, and then it's just having a proactive plan, how do we do this over a ten or twenty-year period and, and look at it in that fashion? I think that's the, the, the only question.
With the chapter ninety, that would be accomplished.
If we have ten million dollars in road improvements, which is probably maybe seventy percent. We're collecting, what, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in chapter ninety funds?
This year, we're a little over four hundred thousand, but in the last few years, it's been half as much as that.
Yeah.
So it, it would almost take twenty-five years of chapter ninety funds to fix roads that only have a twenty useful life anyway.
Exactly.
That's why I wanted this to implement, complement it.
So I, I think that's why the whole process, the, the whole methodology is how it's just. Are, are the voters going to look at this and say, I don't know where it's really going yet? And if it's not going in my neighborhood, why do I care? Uh, if they see their, their roads on the list, I, I think it just, it's better informed voter for a ballot question. I think just the likelihood of success is a little bit stronger.
I agree that the, the more people know, especially, I think everyone votes for their own road to be improved.
A lot of people don't want their road.
I, I don't, it's fast enough. I got beat, I got beat up pretty good on a couple of them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But I think, given the amount that people do complain about the roads, I feel that having this discussion, whether or not it gets turned down or not is valuable. That's, that's why I'm in support of this right now. And if it gets defeated and we can come back with better numbers next spring, then we'll push harder and we'll know exactly what we're pushing for, so.
It gets, it gets on their radar screen, certainly, if it's a valid question, yes.
Can I just ask a devil's advocate question? Is there any danger with so many overrides of voter fatigue and, as I'm saying, too much? And, and having that be a backlash for all these priorities that you clearly feel are so important?
Jen, we fought with that question, I think, both boards. It's a very valid question. I think, at least for me, this year is a little bit of a different year because in a lot of years past, unless they were really out front as one thing, we used to bundle a lot of things. We used to try to go forward with our needs in, in putting together, you know, a comprehensive presentation. I think from what we all heard a little bit earlier, if this town is gonna go into the future and succeed, we're gonna have to fund certain things. I mean, I think Chuck's figure is a little high for me. But maybe we ought to let the voters decide that. So, a lot of what I think we would like to get out to you guys out there is, this is not something that we don't believe in. This is something we stand behind, but this is something that we are now going to do in the future with well-thought-out, uh, processes. Because it's the only way we know that we're gonna be able to fund things going forward in the town of Newbury. Now, is there anyone who wants to add to that? I mean, or is it pretty succinctly said?
You go ahead.
Because I don't know another way, Bob.
I mean, Jeff, typically we go to town meeting, you have a hundred people that participate in town meeting. If it becomes a ballot question, certainly somewhere between a thousand and two thousand people are going to be able to participate in the decision. And I think that governance engages people to become more involved in, in the needs of their community. They'll certainly have a say.
So this, am I accurate to say this is a conscious decision that you have made to bring it forward in this way?
Yes, we've, we've discussed that it could potentially muddy the waters.
Yeah, we've brought that. Uh, but I think you're gonna see from now on in, at least for a while, if I have anything to say about it, I think menus speak more critically to the people that can get behind those. And an override is an override is an override. And if it's needed and the people think it's needed and they pass it, I'm certainly not gonna turn it down. So.
The critical element to any one of these is if you have an informed voter, if they know what they're voting on.
Yep.
That's, that's the key, for me, anyway, that's the key issue, is people have to know.
Absolutely right.
And if they do, whether they vote yes or no, they're at least informed and, and informed decision and, and what the consequences will be. I mean, it's, anyway.
All right, let's go on. I think, I think there's another issue here too, and it's credibility. If you're asked, if any of you are asked by a voter, well, how did you come up with two hundred and fifty thousand? Can you explain that? I, I mean, it, it's, and, and does it then look like we're just throwing numbers at the ballot? I, I mean, it, it hurts us downstream when it comes to asking for eleven point something million for, for the police station. And for other overrides that we can justify precisely because they've been really studied to death.
The idea was, is to try and get the roads done in ten years. With the capital, with the chapter ninety money, and this money with the override, it's possible to do that.
You, you don't know that for sure.
That was the estimate of the, the former D W director. That was the information.
We've gone over it and the items, uh, many, many times. And I think you will find that the road improvement, uh, will back me up.
But doesn't that reduce the overall road improvement to six point five million with two bridges? That just doesn't seem to, to add up to me. Well, if we, if we add two fifty a year and we get four hundred in chapter ninety, that's six fifty a year. That's six point five million dollars in a ten-year period. How does that solve ten-plus million dollars worth of roadwork? I, I think that's what Frank is getting to the point, that, uh, we've heard two bridges are in trouble. Bridges are a million dollars each, I mean, they're without a doubt.
We have the state coming in right now. They are looking to give us help with, one is gonna be the tip program. We tried it before, they would not give it to us because we had no way to put a sidewalk on it. Well, we have now devised a way to do that with the Main Street Bridge. So we have had a lot of the, um, uh, Walter Cubic is the head of the bridges for this district four. He has been in contact with our highway survey. They've gone out and looked at the bridge and he says, yes, I can help you with this. I just don't know to what extent. So we have a lot of talk going on. We have done directional drilling through the road to find out where all of the ledge is. There is a gas pipe hanging on the side of this bridge. We have already gotten agreement with National Grid to come in, directional drill under the river and get rid of that pipe. Now we can go in and fix the bridge. And it's, the numbers are coming in significantly better than replacing the whole bridge. The outflow pipe is okay, but next to the outflow pipe isn't. We have engineers in there looking at that and we think we can fix it for like sixty thousand dollars. Then we have to approach the railing on the bridge and I have no idea what that railing bid is gonna come in at. Estimates are a hundred because some of the concrete work is a lot less than a million dollars to replace the bridge. So yet, we've been doing a lot of numbers crunching on what these are gonna be. And, uh, I think with these numbers here, we can do it.
Chuck.
Yes, sir.
I'm dragging my feet, but that's not a big deal. I understand the concept and I appreciate the concept. I might be a little back where JR is because of some of the discussion that the finance committee has had, um, with the impending study and how we prioritize some of these fixes.
Understandable.
Um, I certainly, at least for me, think that a hundred thousand dollars would certainly get it in front of the public and have an idea that it might be a placeholder from now on and could be changed at that point. And I don't know, is that possible, Tracy, to change it, permanent debt exclusion, it can be raised, or, right?
Just do another one.
So, I, that's my thinking right now. And JR happened to, I don't wanna take that thunder away from JR 'cause you actually mentioned it, right? Didn't you say something about a hundred thousand dollars?
Right. I said split the difference. I guess I was thinking one twenty-five, just as a.
So anyway, if, um, for the farm discussion, what does that do for you? And if you wanna continue the motion, Damon made.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor for the two fifty.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, so we could amend that if you thought that was appropriate.
To the one hundred, I'm, I'm Groveland.
Oh, one twenty-five.
One twenty-five, I'm Groveland was out.
I think, I think that makes better sense. I think it also, this is just me. I also think it gives people a chance to feel that maybe there will be better roads. It's something everyone's thinking about. And it also doesn't, you know, take a, starts to get into some of the feelings that Jen said might be out front.
Um, so how do we?
But that's all right. You gotta be comfortable with that.
What we have to do is vote for an amendment first, then vote for the original motion.
You wanna propose your amendment?
Okay, I, I propose we amend the.
Two fifty.
Two fifty to one twenty-five, is that?
Second that motion, okay?
Any discussion?
Mister Chairman, we're voting only on the amendment right now, okay?
On the amendment.
Okay, so, call for a vote.
Nope. All those in favor?
Aye. All right, okay.
All right, so, do you wanna re-articulate, Damon, the amended vote?
Uh.
In the form of the motion.
The motion as it stands now is to put a road improvement override.
With an amended figure.
With an amended figure of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on the ballot.
Capital override.
Capital, no, uh.
No, general, general, general override.
My mistake, so sorry.
Um, second?
Second the motion.
Um, any discussion on this? All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, um, overrides. Uh, do we wanna go through the draft warrant?
Well, it's getting rather late, Mister Chairman, and I believe we have time for the, um, articles at another date. We also have other business on our selectmen's meeting, so I'll open, I'll throw that out there and see what people think.
Have a good meeting.
Yeah, look at everyone's.
Have a good meeting.
All right, if that be the case, Tracy, what do we? All right, if that be the case, Tracy, what do we, about, what do we need to have done, and what timeframes are we looking at? Do we need to get together with another joint meet, meeting for the articles?
Um, no, the finance committee can, their meeting-
Meeting next Tuesday.
Their meeting next Tuesday night, they'll make their recommendations presumably that evening. I can bring them back to the board for your next meeting.
Yep, and even someone from the finance committee can comment their-
And we can have a, at the next-
So, I think that's a good, Chuck, that's probably a good idea, so thank you guys. And you're welcome, welcome to stay.
Thanks for inviting us.
Yep, that's right, go ahead. Bob, listen.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're adjourned.
We take five minutes and then come back after.
Oh, I, I, I wouldn't reconsider my vote.
Probably don't have-
Two seconds, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Take a break for two minutes, and then we'll re-adjourn. To come back to the table, and can I ask anyone that is outside in the audience talking? If they'd like to stay, they have to sit and not talk. So, all right. Marshall, Richie, Richie and Marshall, head that way. Erica, everyone, Bob, yes. It was nice to see you.
The mold is killing me.
It's nice to see you. All right.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll talk again, I hope, hopefully be more ready.
Moving, moving forward. We have some old business, and Martha, you probably wanna come up front to discuss some of this. Uh, the old business that we have is a continuation of discussion on the solar bylaw amendment. As we know, that the bylaw has not been- Thank you. Marshall, thanks.
It's a pleasure. Thank you, sir. Hey, this is better looking.
Watch out, Ed, still the boss. Okay, as we know, we have certainly had some trouble with the administration of the solar bylaw. It's been somewhat ongoing, it's been hard to reach the super majority. So, that being said, Chuck, do you wanna take and rediscover, or, or, tell us again what you had proposed, and then we can discuss that?
Yes, uh, after quizzing several other towns on how they do their solar bylaw, it is evident to me that they do not, the selectmen do not do that, the planning boards do that in approximately ninety percent, maybe even higher than ninety percent of the towns. And I thought it was time to move it to that. And therefore, Mister Chairman, I make a motion. I move to amend the code of the town of Newbury, chapter ninety-seven zoning, section ninety-seven dash five dot F, ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, to change granting authority for installations requiring a special permit in lieu of the Board of Selectmen, and to make any related required changes to chapter ninety-seven dash five to submit this proposed zoning change to the planning board for public hearing as required under Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, section five.
Wow.
That's a long winded motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do, do we have discussion?
Yeah.
Naturally. Let's go.
I've thought about this some as well, and I think moving to a public hearing is valuable again, just for the same reason I wanted to put the ballot question before the public, so that we have more public input on the question. I'm not decided on the issue one way or the other, I feel that the planning board looks at things based on the site, and I think they do a very good job, and we need their help with the solar bylaw as it stands. My concern about the bylaw currently, or if we gave it exclusively to the planning board, is that it then becomes a little bit like a septic review, where it's just, does it meet the criteria? And it doesn't necessarily apply to the town as a, the master plan or the overall guidance for the town. And I also think there may be some things in the bylaw that need further amendment, such as including fees for engineering review and things like that, so that the bylaw is not a burden to the town. So, I'm excited for further discussion on the issue, but I think it may need to go through even further changes to make it a better bylaw for, for the town.
We do have some changes coming up this fall?
Uh, the board has been talking about making some changes to the bylaw. Um, as with any bylaw, once it actually goes into operation, you start being able to see where it might be able to be tweaked or improved, where things haven't worked so well. Um, also, George Morris and I both went to the, um, Citizen Planner Training Collaborative Conference a couple of weeks ago, and we attended a very good seminar regarding the new, um, the updated model, state model bylaw regarding solar. And so, there are a number of things that we, uh, that the board do, does wanna look at. One of them is, um, adding a provision for peer review, which would be funded by the applicant, which could be both technical and also for, you know, the funding review, the funding agreement and things like that. And, uh, probably some, some others as, as, you know, as we go through it. So, the anticipation right now is that there would be some sort of a revision proposed for the fall.
So, that meant that, um, and then I gotta ask you about the motion, so that meant that probably coming out of this, no matter where this ends up residing, we would need specific engineering help to go forward with some of the stuff?
Well, I think it-
That would be, meant probably part of what we would have to put into some of the new thinking in the bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would make sense to have that, have that provision, we have it for other things like site plan review.
Subdivisions, everything, doesn't make any sense.
Right, 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 right. And, um, you know, selectmen bearers correct, ninety percent, or probably more than ninety percent of communities in the Commonwealth do have the planning board be the special permit granting authority.
And that was reflected in where you went to that seminar, and what they thought was that a lot of times it becomes a little bit political when it's, and you're more of a technical board.
Um, well, it was, um, a couple of reasons. One is the planning board is specifically set up to deal with special permits because we, we have an, we have an associate. And so, we generally don't run into the same sort of super majority issues.
That's huge, we, we seem to have a big stumbling block there, so, that's huge.
We do have an opening in our associate position right now anyway, but, uh, we'll be advertising for that. And in most communities, um, in the seminar, actually, somebody did ask a question. He has a select, uh, a member of his Board of Selectmen who would like the special permit granting authority for solar to be the selectman. And I was the only one there who said that that's the case in our town.
Just a, a question, Martha. If I read the motion somewhat technically, we're moving to amend the code and pass the special granting authority, which is, is that ninety-seven five F or is that ninety-seven eleven?
Uh, no, for, for solar, it's ninety-seven five F.
All right, that's the special granting authority?
For, only for solar installations.
Only for solar, so. If we make a move and we approve that move, what does the public hearing serve? What's the function of the public hearing?
Um, well, basically, under Mass General Law, under chapter forty-eight, section five, any zoning changes that go before town meeting have to go to public hearing with the planning board. And it doesn't matter whether the planning board initiates it, you're familiar with the process where the planning board initiates, sends to you, you refer back for planning, uh, for planning board public hearing. If you initiate it, it still has to go to public hearing, if it were a citizens position, petition, it still has to go to public hearing. There's a very prescribed procedure under Mass General Law of how zoning changes go before town meeting.
So, like Damon was talking about, our motion more of tonight almost makes it that it's still open for some of the feedback we get out of public hearing.
Well, I, it really depends on who comes, and the process is, you're, you are potentially initiating the change, sending it to the planning board for public hearing. We already have our zoning public hearing scheduled for tomorrow night. So, this would be doing something a little out of sequence, and I think too, the warrant's gonna be signed on April twenty-eighth, is that the?
And that probably should make it, right?
Fourteenth, yeah, on the agenda. Oh, no, I take it back, um, you'll take your votes for the annual town meeting. Warrant on the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, you'll have to sign both of them, the later than.
So, the earliest, um, because it has to be advertised twice, and the first time is no less than fourteen days before the public hearing. The, um, I think the earliest, um, if the planning board were to vote tomorrow night to hold the public hearing, and we get the add-in to the news- add-in to the newspaper by the end of the week, it appears on next Monday or Tuesday, the earliest that the board could actually hold the public hearing would be April 22nd, at which time, they'd have the public hearing, get feedback from anybody who came, and then have to vote that night to recommend it to the selectmen for inclusion on the ballot, or on the warrant, sorry.
And I think for those that might be watching on television, that the standing solar array that is before us at this time would still be going through us as it stands right now, because it's already been submitted.
That's correct.
So, even this change...
Would not apply.
...wouldn't make this any easier, because it has nothing to do with it.
It would not apply to this application.
It's just a result of the problems we've had.
Right, right. So, if there were future applications that came in after the town adopted the change, then that change would go into effect for those.
If it's on the town floor.
Or even tonight. If another solar array were to come in after this motion, doesn't that, won't that, no, still?
No, not until it's adopted.
All right, all right. So, anything else, guys?
So, basically, in layman's terms, if we approve this, it would go to a vote at town meeting?
Well, if you, if you vote affirmative of this motion, it will come to the planning board for public hearing. The planning board would then vote to hold the public hearing and vote to refer it back to the selectmen for inclusion on the warrant.
And that's because it's a zoning change, right?
Right, so, we get to discuss it many times.
But there'd be no public input or...
That's what the public...
At the public...
Right, but it wouldn't be, like, you couldn't bring it to a vote, a public vote. This would be solely on...
Not, not until public...
Between the Board of Selectmen and the planning board.
No, this is going to...
And then it'd go to town meeting.
Everyone in the audience. Then it goes to town meeting.
And town meeting has to approve it. So, that's when the town gets...
So, I would just want to be sure, if we go forward with this, it comes to a citizens' vote at the town meeting?
Yeah, it has to. Any zoning change has to go before town meeting, and in order to be adopted, it has to pass by two-thirds majority.
If it is going to come to a vote of the townspeople at the end of the day, I would entertain it.
See, I think, and I think we've come to somewhat of a consensus, I think what's hard for us, and I don't, I'm not positive that it would change with a rule of necessity when we become a five-member board, and take this correctly, because it might not even be solar. But we're not as much as a technical board as the planning board, and we can be, we can almost sit here, and I'm trying to put this as carefully as I can, we might not like something, and we can just turn it down, because we personally don't like it.
Mm-hmm. I love the way that bylaw is structured.
Well, no, because there'll be ramifications, but that doesn't cause you from turning it down. So, I guess what happens is that becomes somewhat political and agenda-driven, where the planning board seems to be a more technical person that deals with things like this. But that's...
They'll have to operate under the same rules you want.
They'll operate under all the same rules, but it has a tendency, I think...
That's how you perceive the vote, isn't it?
Yeah, so...
Well, my only concern is that I'd like the time to really suss out any changes, so that we're not amending the bylaw for this meeting, and then amending it again for the fall meeting. I'd like to get it as close to right as we can. Do you feel that that is doable in the timeframe we're looking at? Or if we try to rush it, are we going to just screw something else up?
Well, this is, this is the only thing that we, we would have time to address right now. I mean, reviewing the bylaw and looking at other changes really will take a thorough going through.
We knew when we started this, that we were going to be making changes down the road, okay? Because basically, the next time we do this, it'll be the second time. So, we will be making changes, and probably two or three years down the road, something else will happen, and we'll make changes there too, so...
But I mean, you know what? Chuck, were you on the CONCON? Who were you?
No.
Okay. But I mean, I come out of CONCON and Planning Board, and I understand JR and Damon in thinking of your realm where you are right now. And I respect that, so, I don't think you should be pushed to do anything you don't want to do. So, did we, we had a motion?
Yes, motion and seconded.
Is there any more discussion?
Just briefly, do you feel like the, Martha, do you feel like the planning board addresses citizens' concerns in the same way or as heavily as the Board of Selectmen would? Or do you look at it more as a statistics and by the word, you know, Massachusetts says this, okay, so it's okay, it doesn't matter what the abutters say or do, or how it affects them, or if they, if the solar array has an easement on their property, so they can't grow trees, or potentially force them to cut them down, which are all things that are, you know, written into mass law? I mean, is it, will it turn into a cookie cutter, cut and dry? Massachusetts says this is okay anywhere, so it is? Like, do you feel the planning board? Because it's, like, you'll see the Middle Road Array, wasn't contested by anybody. I attended the meetings. That array affects farmland that we use, but you know what? It's zoned commercially, it's privately owned, and none of the abutters were adversely affected. There's nothing anyone can say about it. My concern is citing solar in residential areas and how it affects abutters. I mean, I think you can see circumstances where there's a large parcel of land that can be kept well away from everyone, and no one could have a problem with it. But both instances we've seen where it's been proposed to be cited in residential neighborhoods, you see a strong backlash. When it's cited in commercial districts, you see zero backlash. You know, that's what really concerns me about letting go of this responsibility.
Well, I'll say, I'll say this, and, you know, whoever the special permit granting authority is, really needs to go by, by the bylaw and what the decision criteria are in the bylaw. Listen to abutters' concerns, which enables the special permit granting authority to condition, you know, condition the project in a way that will be beneficial to abutters if they have concerns. If there are things that are clearly in violation of the bylaw, then, you know, it should be voted accordingly. If there are things that, that, you know, need to be modified via conditions, then that, that should happen as well. I mean, I think, I think the board, and any board, would look at each, each individual application on its own, you know, merits, and judge the pluses and the minuses. You know, we do have strict, you know, we do have guidelines and model bylaw that have been issued by the state that, that come in, into play, and that we'll be looking at in revising the bylaw potentially, if that goes forward.
And the planning board would use the same safety, welfare, well-being standards?
And they're, that's part of the standard of the bylaw, so...
I mean, I think, I think the planning board, and I can't say that, I suppose you could get yourself into just as easily a concept where your planning board members were farming the land, and, you know, someone else was a neighbor of the land, because that's where we are right now. I suppose that could occur to you.
Right, I mean, there's, there, there's no guarantee that there wouldn't be a conflict of interest, right? You know, whether you're an abutter or, you know, have some other relationship.
So, I guess what it comes to us as a vote, you know, following what Martha said, that we're going to not insert our own personal beliefs in this, but follow the concepts of the bylaw itself, and be true to ourselves how we look at it, then, and try to cite it in the best places, like JR just said. I mean, if that being said, it probably comes down to the fact of who might be best to facilitate the process, because the board does that all the time. If it stays with us, if it becomes apparent that it stays with us, I don't want to be doing them anymore unless we have an engineer that we can actually charge off to the solar bylaw people and be able to back ourselves up with engineering, because we're flying by the seat of our pants. If it hadn't been for Martha and the planning board doing the ground proofing and everything else of all these big huge submittals, I couldn't do it.
My point exactly.
That's why they do it all the time. So, if we're going to get this, then we, I mean, Martha will always help us, but part of us having these things means we're supposed to know all those things. So, I'll get an engineer, so...
All right, and having engineering review as part of the bylaw would be very beneficial.
Especially if we end up keeping this, if it gets driven at town meeting that we keep this, we've got to become, have some of that ability for engineering. All right, should, are we ready to take a vote?
I am, sir.
Yeah, all right. All those in favor? All right. So, it's done. All right. Correspondence. Want me to read a lot of stuff? We don't have any, right? Good. Meeting minutes, no warrants, no meeting updates, executive session, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.